Amherst Town Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Hope everybody had a first, a good first day of school for those of you who had kids to get on the buses and such. I'm going to begin this evening in memory of a couple people. The first is Larry Bainbridge. Larry was a retired detective sergeant with the Amherst Police Department. After born in 30 years of dedication and was an exempt member of the North Bailey Fire Department. The second is Eleanor Berger. Eleanor, for those who don't know, is the, is the mother of Councilwoman Jaclyn Berger. And Jackie's not at tonight's meeting, she's still going through the, the, everything that comes with losing a loved one. She was a longtime resident of the Jewish Federation Apartments, a big member of the community there. It's in both of their memory that we hold tonight's meeting. I would ask everybody at this point to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Okay, the first item, I'm going to ask the town clerk to please call a roll.
Supervisor Kopa. Deputy Supervisor Levin. Councilmember Marinucci.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from Monday, August 18th, 2025. A motion to adopt those as they appear.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next items on the agenda are proclamations and announcements. We have a couple. I'm going to ask Deputy Supervisor Levin to please handle those.
Thank you Supervisor. So, the Town of Amherst is going to declare September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We also recognize September as National Senior Center Month.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, the Town of Amherst will hold our annual 9/11 Ceremony of Remembrance on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, 9:30 a.m. At the Amherst Memorial Hill Grove. All are welcome to attend. If you haven't been, it's a very moving ceremony and I recommend that you attend. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing on Resolution 742, which is a negative declaration and then ultimately a contract of sale for 2018 and 30 and 330 Maple Road, CRS 5789. And I'm going to motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town Attorney, present.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. For those in the audience who don't know me, my name is Chuck Malcolm. I'm with the law firm Hodgson Russ and I serve as special counsel to the town on certain matters. Before the board tonight is a resolution that authorizes the sale of certain real property for the reuse and redevelopment as an indoor sports facility. Now, just to recap of where we are. At the end of 2024, the town acquired property at 218 and 330 Maple Road and we commonly refer to that property as the Gun Club property. The board at that time, back in end of 2024, founded in the public interest to retain the ball fields and infrastructure that the town had installed pursuant to a leasehold interest that it acquired with the property owner. At the time of the transaction, the seller of the property only offered the entirety of those two parcels for sale. So, the town, in order to preserve its investment in the infrastructure and ball fields that it constructed, needed to acquire the entirety of the site. That site, the total acres were 33.328 approximately. And the town paid approximately 171,787 per acre. At the time the town was going to acquire this property, it specifically noted that at some future point, the remainder of the property to the east, less the ball fields, may be considered for some future reuse and that may not be necessary for municipal purposes. But because it was offered together, the acquisition together was necessary. So shortly after the acquisition, the town began working with the Town of Amherst Development Corporation staff to try and facilitate redevelopment and reuse of, we'll call this the additional land. So, working with the ADC, the town identified a potential reuse and developer for the site, 716 Sports Complex LLC. And the potential reuse is as an indoor sports facility complex. Now, the proposed sale of the 33 acres that the town acquired would only be 21.88 acres, which is what's proposed to be transferred in the resolution and what's proposed before the board to be declared as not necessary for public municipal purposes. The proposed sale price would be 225,000 per acre, which is significantly more than what the town paid to acquire the property. In order to move forward to transfer the property, there's certain procedural requirements that need to be met. One, under the not-for-profit corporation law, this type of a transfer requires a public hearing. That's what we're doing here today so that the town board can take comment from members of the public on the proposed transaction. In addition, the state law requires that the environmental impacts of the proposed transaction be evaluated. And there's a detailed breakdown of the proposed evaluation for the board's consideration that has been prepared. It's of note that right now, before the board is a project that's conceptual in nature. We don't have a specific land use application that's been submitted to the town yet. So, what's being reviewed under the State Environmental Quality Review Act is the transfer of the real property. At some future point, when the developer submits land use applications, there will be a robust and thorough planning and zoning process that will be undertaken by the town. There will be a full seeker review of detailed designs that will have to be presented to the town and those will all be subject to public input and review as part of the process. But for today's purposes, the seeker review reviews the transfer of the real property. So, that's what's before the board this evening. That's what the public hearing is about. And if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Supervisor, for the public input.
Okay, thank you. First questions from the board. We'll go to the public input. I understand that there's a designated speaker, so I'm going to invite them to come up.
Good evening Supervisor Kopa and Town Board members. My name is Mary Dormer and I reside in Getzville. I am speaking as a resident of the Town of Amherst. I would like to start with why you own the property in the first place. In 2020, you signed a binding purchase and sale contract in a corresponding MOU with Bones &amp; Guts, which you kept referring to as UBM-D. However, Bones &amp; Guts is actually a group of doctors and investors behind the development who coordinated the building of the site with Seminole Development. The complex was sold before completion to a Chicago Medical Building Investment Company and UBM-D are tenants. But you removed the Amherst girls and number 39 softball fields to make way for UBM-D, which was required by the contract. Then you spent 2.2 million dollars to replace those fields, which you decided to plant on leased property. Shortly thereafter, you were forced to buy the entire property for 5.7 million dollars to preserve the 2.2 million dollar field investment. This is a direct taxpayer expense of your Amherst Central Park Plan and negotiations. During the July 6th, 2020 contract and rezoning hearings, you stated the UBM-D sale was the cornerstone, quote, "the cornerstone of the Amherst Central Park Project" and quote, "the rest of the project would fall apart without it." During those Zoom meetings, residents also complained that documents that were supposed to be attached to the agenda were missing, had been posted that day or the day before, leaving no time for proper public review. Last December 5th, 2024, the following quote appeared in the Buffalo News, quote, "As for the Gun Club site, Kopa said the town has had a tentative agreement in place for several years with UBM-D to build an indoor sports facility near the North Town Center complex," end quote. And, quote, "The town's plan is to sell the unused 23 acres at the Gun Club site to make way for that facility and for parking shared with the softball league," end quote. Number one, there is no tentative agreement with UBM-D for the public review in the agenda packet that has been posted for this sale. And number two, the seeker negative declaration simply dismisses any potential impacts by stating, quote, "The specifics of the redevelopment have yet to be proposed," end quote. And that neither the town nor ADC has enough information to evaluate the impacts of such a development. This is absolutely nonsense. Clearly, there have been numerous backroom discussions between the town, the ADC, members of UBM-D, the AIDA, and 716 Sports Complex LLC. Despite numerous public statements by UBM-D development representative about these plans, apparently, the town, the ADC, and the folks preparing the seeker document remain unaware of them. On August 18th, the Buffalo News reported on this sale by the town to the ADC, quote, "716 Sports Complex plans to construct a $300,000, excuse me, 300,000 square foot complex of three buildings." On June 19th, Dr. Brian McGrath explained his plans for 716 Health in an online publication, Traffic East, quote, "They are targeting 2027 for the completion of a three-phase, 400,000 square foot addition that will house a sports field house, an indoor track for youth and amateur athletics, and a flagship hotel," end quote. UBM-D Orthopedics has also commented on its plan on its Facebook page. Dr. McGrath shared some of the inspiration behind the project, what it means for the landscape of healthcare and patients in Western New York, and plans for the next stage of development, including the 716 Sports Field House. 716 Sports Field Complex is so sure of your approval tonight, they created 716sportscomplex.com. I would just like to end that we have a picture here that at the last minute, we were not allowed to post. And so, I will submit this as part of the record.
John Trabert, Mount Vernon Road. I'm speaking as a resident also. The town's application for the sale of this land frames this entire transaction as a development project in the best interest of the town. However, by transferring the property over to the Amherst Development Corporation, you have the opportunity to circumvent public review and deny the public any chance to learn or review what is really planned. If it is in the best interest of the public, why not open it up to more than one public hearing that is occurring tonight? By selling this land to the Amherst Development Corporation, you also bypass the need to show appraisals of land value on the open market. This land will be sold for approximately $225,000 per acre, while a parcel of land a few miles down the road sold for $325,000 per acre. That's $100,000 per acre difference. Given the information we know about the town's vision and the negotiating skills, I would like to ask the following questions in the interest of transparency that I believe should be answered prior to your vote. Where is the Amherst Development Corporation disposition agreement and the application for lead agency status? Has this been made available for public review? Where is the Amherst Development Corporation seeker consensus form that should be in the application? Is it being withheld and why? You passed a resolution to bond for the property purchase but have not executed that bond. Is that bond still in effect? Did the money from the original purchase come out of the general fund of the town? Who exactly is 716 Sports Complex LLC? The public was told UBM-D would purchase the property, yet 716 Sports Complex LLC was registered in Delaware on July 29th, 2025. Who are the parties that are involved in this deal? Why does 716 Complex require ADC or Amherst Industrial Development Agency involvement? Why can't they purchase the property directly from the town? Will the field house and the hotel be located in the 21-acre former Gun Club site? Is the town-owned parking lot, is there a town-owned parking lot planned for this parcel? Does this land sale include any town ADC or AIDA ownership of a ramp adjacent to UBM-D or North Town Center? I have a copy of these questions, by the way. Is there any additional land swap involved between any parties? If so, what are the terms and who benefits? UBM-D has publicly stated that a hotel will be built on site. Can you confirm this? Has the town discussed or pre-approved any five or eight-story buildings? In the 2023 town issued, in 2023, the town issued an RFP for a golf architect to assess the Audubon Golf Course. Does this project involve reconfiguring of the course or nearby softball fields? And lastly, what is the full financial impact of the project on taxpayers? Amherst is already $196 billion in debt. How much more can it take? Just to finish up, most people are not opposed to the idea of a sports complex or a field house or any project that might improve the community as long it is done with openness and does not come at an unreasonable burden to taxpayers. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just go through a couple of items. Yeah, I should follow up for, I'll give it to Brandon. Yes, or other speakers? We're, we'll answer questions at the end.
Good morning, good afternoon, evening, Town Board. My name is Stan Sliva. For purposes of transparency, I was the town attorney from 2016. I'm the Republican Town Supervisor until I retired in 2022. I've sat here and heard these comments and I'm saying to myself, "What resolution are these people looking at? This has nothing to do with anything other than, unless I'm mistaken, Mr. Malcolm, other than a negative declaration." That's it. There's no sales contract. There's nothing else before us. That has been executed? Okay, so that, I take that back. I would...
All right. Everybody needs to respect one another in the space.
Then I take that back because I must have missed that. But in any event, I stand here to approve the sale of the Gun Club as outlined and approve the, ask the board to approve the negative declaration. Thank you.
Other speakers? Anybody else?
Chris Drangowski, Mill Street. My question is, who is the Amherst Development Company? Why is the town doing the transaction with the Amherst Development? And why is the town not selling this property directly to the doctor's group? What are the incentives, what are the advantages, disadvantages of using Amherst Development as the middle person in this transaction? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Town Board members. My name is Don Smith. Just so everybody understands, a negative deck associated with a contract for sale are two separate things and are both contained in this resolution. Therefore, Stan, I think we're still talking about a contract for sale, unless I am wrong. If I am wrong, tell me I'm wrong.
No, there is a contract for sale.
Therefore, this is a contract for sale. Simply put. So, the comments relative to the contract for sale were valid comments and the comments against the comments regarding the sale make no sense. Again, thank you again, Stan. I like to get this thing going here. I liked John's, Trabert's comments, most of them, which occurred to me when I read this. I really did. I looked it up on the Delaware LLC lookup table and it was in the 716 Sports Complex LLC was logged in or registered on July 29, 2025. Now, that's not necessarily something that doesn't happen. It happens a lot. Okay? That means that there was something else going on with the people who are part of that prior to that in an environment which has the one that this board knows about. Therefore, if there is something that you know about that you haven't told us, you have to tell us. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. I'd like to follow up a little bit on Mr. Drangowski's question. I'm wondering why the town's even involved in this at all, to tell you the truth. That property could have easily been sold from the American Campus Communities who owned it before to 716 Medical or whoever it is that's buying it without the intervention of this town. And the argument that we're doing it to protect the girls' softball fields, to me, is a bogus argument because this town had the authority to take that property by eminent domain anytime they wanted to. It was already being put to a public use and the town could have condemned it and taken it by paying reasonable market value for it. They could have had it anytime. Suddenly, we jumped in, not we, but the town board jumped in at the end of the year and one of the rationales, as I remember, was the owners of American Campus Communities were looking for a big tax write-off and we provided it. And that's how this town got involved in this project. There's really no reason for the town to be in it at all. And to tell you the truth, the more hands this thing gets passed through, the more it smells.
We'll take Jane and then have you speak.
Jane Cox, Harlem Road. I just want to reiterate what Chris just spoke about. This contract is with the Amherst Development Corporation. I would like to know what is the difference between the Amherst Development Corporation and the Amherst IDA? It appears they're the same agency. If you could explain why it's being listed as a sale to the Development Corporation, which I've never heard of, then we'll see where we go from there. Thank you.
Okay, I will answer, try and answer a couple of these questions. I appreciate the list. That made it easier to kind of go back and make sure I'm covering most everything. But I'll start with the last question we just received. Is the, is the Amherst Development Corporation the same as the IDA? The answer is no. The Amherst Development Corporation is a type of not-for-profit corporation. It's organized pursuant to a special section of the not-for-profit corporation law. Its purpose and function is to facilitate economic redevelopment. And there could be different local development corporations that are created. Some are countywide, some are, you know, in cities. This one is, serves the benefit of the town. So, their purpose and their function is to participate in certain projects and use the powers that were conveyed to them by the state legislature to facilitate reuse and redevelopment, to create jobs, growth, and bring uses to the community that otherwise aren't available. And that's their role, their staff. While a lot of times, local development corporations have agreements, intermunicipal agreements with industrial development agencies and sometimes the economic development purposes overlap. And sometimes the staffing are the same, sometimes the board members are the same. But they have distinct roles, functions, and they're separate entities. The reason, and this goes to the gentleman's question who provided the list as to why is the ADC involved in the process? Well, the ADC was involved in the process from the very beginning because that's their job. The staff was involved in trying to bring a development here to fruition. And the structure that we're using, there's many different ways to convey municipal property. And there's specific laws and regulations to do that. And this is the structure that we decided and it's on the advice of council that the town is using to transfer this real property. And that's why we're having this public hearing today because the legal requirements to transfer property to a development corporation require this process. The question of where the disposition agreement is between the town and the ADC was, you'll see in the resolution, it references the property disposition agreement as being part of the purchase and sale agreement. I would refer everyone to Section 5.6. That governs the terms of the property disposition. In sum and substance, it requires the proceeds of the sale to get a certain price, the 225 an acre, and for those proceeds to be remitted back to the town less the ADC's actual costs and their involvement in the transaction. The question of, you know, where is the ADC seeker consensus? So, this action is an unlisted action under seeker. And what that means is that it doesn't require a coordinated review. But the agency is determined to undertake a coordinated review regardless, which means one agency is going to step up, do the environmental review, and then all the other agencies will abide by that determination. The consent from the ADC was provided by staff. And it's just basically an acknowledgement that the town board, as the owner of the property, has the most jurisdiction over a particular action and they're the ones that really have the most control over the action and should be the ones as the lead agency. The seeker regulations provide and the DEC guidance provides that when you look at multiple agencies that have an approval over a certain action, the one with the most jurisdiction or the most control is the one that should be the lead agency. And here, because it's town property, it's rightfully the town's role. Who exactly is 716 Sports Complex? Well, this LLC is a special purpose entity that's created for the development project and partners in the LLC include Brian McGrath and Mark Feinberg. It's often and smart and prudent to create a special purpose entity for a development project. So, the fact that this entity was recently created to contemplate this property transaction is typical and fairly standard. Will the field house and hotel be located on the former Gun Club site? The answer is, let me just caveat that. What, the proposed reuse and redevelopment is going to occur on the property that's being transferred. Exactly what that's going to be, we don't know other than it's going to be a, an indoor sports facility complex. That's the proposal. And to kind of answer the question that's down further, is there going to be a hotel? How big? Have we agreed to a certain number of stories? All that is no. At some point, the developer is going to have to come to the town because even though it's getting transferred to the Amherst Development Corporation, even though it's going to be in the hands of another party that wants to develop the site, they have to go through the process of land use and zoning. They're going to have to submit design drawings. And then we're going to be in the same position, maybe for the planning board or another board, reviewing those plans. So, nothing has been agreed to, nothing has been approved specifically for the site. And that's exactly why we're talking about the seeker as we are now. Because it makes no sense to try and review the impacts of a project that's at this stage of development. And that's why, first of all, the seeker case law doesn't require you to do that study now because of where we are. We don't even have a development plan. But even if we did, as set forth in the regulations... But even if we did, as set forth in the regulations, they contemplate this type of, if you want to call it that, an appropriate intentional segmentation. Because we know that at some point, there's going to be seeker review of whatever's developed there. And you're not being any less protective of the environment by doing this appropriately. It would be nonsensical to try and study the impacts of a development project at this stage because we might miss a whole bunch of stuff and not look at it. Does this land sale include any town ADC, IDA ownership of a ramp adjacent to UBM D or North Town Center? No. Is there any additional land swap involved between the parties? No. In 2023, the town issued an RFP for a golf architect to assess the Audubon course. Does this project involve reconfiguring the course or nearby softball fields? No, this is about the transfer of the real property. And again, nothing has been submitted. And as far as the full financial impact to the taxpayers, this is going to bring in money to the town.
Any other comments, questions?
Good evening. My name is John Radens. I'm from 25 Kmart Drive. I just want to say how delighted I am that this administration is trying to get a world-class park for all its residents in this town to be paid for by the county. It will be operated and maintained by county expenses. And I'll get to enjoy it, and everybody in the county gets to enjoy it. And it will be the only park in this town that the county will be paying for.
Yeah, I think you're thinking of the next, that's the next public hearing. So two separate parcels.
Two different parcels.
Sorry.
Put that advance. Thank you.
It can be hard to hear. So again, this is on... Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to motion to adopt the seeker findings associated with the project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 743. It's a PSA for seven, a public hearing on a PSA for 772 North Forest Road, 385 and 391 Maple Road, CRS 5772. I'm going to motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. My name is Liz Burkowsky and I'm Director of Special Projects for the town. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed agreement of purchase and sale between the town and the County of Erie for the property formerly known as the Westwood Country Club that is before you. This is just a map to orient you to the property. The north border of the property is Maple Road and the southern border is Sheridan Drive. On the east is North Forest Road. This property was formerly Willowdale Country Club. It was a Jewish club founded in 1919 and it opened for play in 1921. It was established by a group of Jewish residents who were unable to gain admission to other country clubs in the town. It was a nine-hole course. It was designed by Willie Park Jr., who was a renowned golf course designer. The clubhouse, which you're all familiar with, is a big, beautiful building that was opened in 1928. And all looked well until the stock market crashed in 1929 and members suffered financial losses and then membership plummeted as a result. There were multiple iterations of the club in the next approximately 20 years. The Willowdale folks partnered with other Jewish clubs to try to sustain those clubs so that there would be a Jewish club in town. Unfortunately, they weren't able to sustain that club. Eventually, it was sold and renamed the Westwood Country Club. It was revived and expanded in 1945 and began to resemble what we're all familiar with now, which included tennis and swimming pool and 18 holes of golf. That club was sold to Mensch Capital Partners in 2012 and unfortunately enclosed in 2014. Mensch tried to create a new development at Westwood. It was going to be a very large mixed-use development and ultimately was rejected by the residents and by the town for concerns such as sewer capacity and generally traffic concerns and just placing a large development into a quiet residential area. The town negotiated a purchase from West, pardon me, from Mensch in 2023. The cost of that purchase was $7.75 million. The town did develop a concept plan for the property, which was ambitious and included things like a theater, a museum, an inclusive playground, a splash pad, an ice ribbon, and then more passive recreational areas to the north in the property. There was some strong community feedback to that plan, including both an Article 78 challenge and a petition for permissive referendum. At that point, the town board rescinded the bond authorization for part of the park and began to search for alternate solutions to the redevelopment of this property. In April of 2025, the supervisor and the county executive announced a new partnership under which the county would take over this property and develop it into a world-class county park. The reason that Erie County Parks is so well-suited to handle this property is because they have so much experience administering, developing, operating parkland. They have over 10,000 acres of parkland. They have a huge staff to take care of it and special expertise in golf and passive parks. As you know, there is no county park in Amherst right now, which, as the largest town in the county, we see as a problem. We see this park as what will be a regional asset. You will have residents coming from around the county and from even outside the county to visit this park. And so a regional asset should be funded and operated by a regional body. The ultimate goal here is the transfer of title to 170 acres, which is the entire property. And it will be redeveloped and operated as Willowdale County Park. This drawing represents the southeast corner of the property. You can see it's at the corner of North Forest and Sheridan Drive. And you can see that there's a light green dotted line around the portion of the land that the town will retain in the short term. It's 8.2, pardon me, 8.12 acres. And the town is going to retain that property while it does construction on certain improvements to the park. So it will include an inclusive playground that will be designed to afford recreational opportunities for a greater portion of the population than a traditional playground. There will be a public event space to the west of that playground that will include activities or will be suitable for activities such as a winter market, a farmer's market, food truck, rodeos, anything where you would want to bring in stalls or food trucks or something that would need to park on a stable surface. There will also be a restroom building, which will be constructed to the east of the playground. And that will be an accessible building that will accommodate the users who would come to that inclusive playground, who might need more expansive facilities than just a traditional bathroom. There will also be space to the southeast of the playground for public arts or cultural monuments, which is to be determined at this point. These are just a couple of conceptual drawings of the inclusive playground. You can see that, you know, it's just a modern playground that will accommodate users who aren't just, you know, your average three-year-old running around. This will be a more accessible playground for entire families and groups of people who might not otherwise have a playground close by they can use. The county project is going to be the rest of the site. So it'll be about 162 acres. And the plan is reactivation of seven of the historic holes of golf into a nine-hole golf course. So they'll be adding two holes. They are planning to restore the cart paths that exist. I believe they're going to widen them a bit. And the bulk of their portion of the park, or at least the western portion of the park, will be a large passive park with walking trails and natural outdoor recreation opportunities. So folks will be able to get out in nature, enjoy the wildlife that's out there. And there will be, I believe they're going to do things like 5Ks and, you know, races and charity walks and things like that. But we have a representative from the county who's going to speak a little bit more about that after I'm done here. So the proposed purchase and sale agreement that is before you is designed to effect a two-stage transfer of title because we want to accommodate those two separate projects. Immediately upon closing, the county would take over the 162 acres and they would be able to do their work to restore the park and restore the golf course. The town will retain the 8.12 acres in the southeast corner because the town has grant funding to complete its projects. So in order to retain that grant funding, the town needs to retain the land until those projects are completed. Once those projects are completed, then the 8.12 acres would be transferred to the county and the town would have no further ownership in that land. At that point, the county would own and operate and be fully responsible for that land as a county park. The town will retain an easement, a recreation easement, over the entire property, which would allow the town to use the property for traditional recreation park-type activities. The purpose of that is less that the town is interested in going in while the county is operating the park and more that we issued tax-exempt bonds to purchase this park. In order to maintain the tax-exempt status of those bonds, we have to retain a property interest in the park. So the easement is the lightest way to do that. That easement will exist until those bonds are fully repaid, which I believe is projected to be 2048. There are a number of documents that are in place to affect environmental protections in coordination and with the supervision of the DEC over the entire site. The town voluntarily joined into a DECP order, which governs the environmental remediation. And the county will join as an additional party and will have the same rights and responsibilities under that order. There's been a lot of conversation about the town selling the park for $1. That's not what's happening here. Yes, $1 is going to exchange hands when the deed is transferred. However, I'm showing you here the investments in the park so that you can see the contract refers to additional consideration. If you look at the bottom where it says Erie County, Erie County has already allocated, the legislature has allocated $6.7 million for capital improvements at the park. This is the first round of capital improvements, which I believe includes things like stabilizing the clubhouse, like reviving the golf course and doing the cart path restoration and preparing the park for that passive recreation in the western half. Additionally, the county plans to spend approximately $1 million a year staffing and operating the park. That is a cost that will be avoided by the town because of this transfer. Additionally, if you look at the grant funding portion of this slide, you'll see that Erie County gave us a grant for $2.4 million for planning, design, and construction of this park, which is what we have been using. There's about $1 million left in that grant still, which allows us to help complete our portion of the park. We have a $1 million DASNY grant from New York State. And we expect that the restroom building will be funded by a community benefit agreement of about $250,000. So you can see that there's about $3.6 million that offsets that purchase price of 7.5. And then the county is investing, you know, over $6.7 million in capital. That doesn't include anything like completely restoring the clubhouse or any additional buildings or facilities the county may wish to install on the property. That would all be additional consideration for this land. And it would be completely the county's responsibility. That would not be a town cost. As far as environmental considerations go, Mensch did participate in the brownfield cleanup program because there was some contamination that was found on site through testing. The brownfield cleanup program is not available to local governments. So instead, the town has entered into what's called the P Order with the DEC. And the P Order is the mechanism for the DEC to monitor any of the cleanup and then also to provide regulatory release at the end of the cleanup to say that this site is clean. The county, as I mentioned, will join as an additional party to the P Order and will be held to the same responsibilities, but will receive the same protections that the town will. We've been using CNS as our environmental engineers on this property. And there's been quite a bit of environmental testing, a lot of soil sampling. And we've been advised by CNS that on the town project area, there are no exceedances of the standard for active remediation. Essentially, what that means is the standard is restricted residential. And our testing data shows that the level of contaminants in our 8.12 acres does not require active remediation. So we would not require soil excavation, for example, in that area because the contaminants are not that concentrated there. And then the county will also be doing their own remediation, which they will be able to tell you more about. So if you approve this agreement, the end result is going to be Willowdale Park. It's going to be the first county park in Amherst. It's going to have a revitalized historic nine-hole golf course that honors the cultural heritage and frankly, the sports history of Amherst. You'll have a passive park with walking and biking trails and lots of opportunity to get out and enjoy nature. There will be an inclusive playground, an outdoor space for special events and winter markets. The costs for this regional asset that can be shared and enjoyed by people from outside the town of Amherst, from the entire county and from the region, will be shared regionally. And there will be no additional cost to the town after the transfer of title for both of these parcels. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just want to confirm a couple of points because I am both an Amherst town taxpayer and a county taxpayer. Right now, it would require significant improvement to get this park open, correct?
Correct.
There are more taxpayers in the county than there are in the town of Amherst. So my cost as a taxpayer will be lower as a county taxpayer than if this were to say, an Amherst asset and be improved upon by the town of Amherst, correct?
Yes. If the town were to redevelop this, it would be significant cost to Amherst taxpayers.
Right. So I will still be paying as a county taxpayer, but over a larger share of proportionate taxpayers.
Correct.
Thank you. One thing, the playground as liaison to the youth board. The reason it kind of looked like that, which is really cool, is that it reflects some of the natural topography. But I did want to hit once again on the winter markets and the playgrounds. Those are grant-funded, correct, which is not town of Amherst tax-related funds?
Correct. The grant funding for the winter market is courtesy of Legislature Vinyl. And the grant funding for the playground is from the dormitory authority.
Wonderful. Okay. I think that's all mine for now. Thank you.
Tony, I'm sorry, we have a speaker from the county as well.
Good evening, folks. My name is Ben Swanacamp. For those who don't know me, I'm the Chief of Staff, County Executive of Polon Cars. Very excited to be here tonight to talk about this collaboration with the town. It's been a long time in the making. We're very excited to try and get this thing over the finish line. I think it's going to be an awesome result for Amherst residents and Erie County as a whole. Erie County, as Liz talked about, has a great reputation for our parks. Since County Executive of Polon Cars came in, we've made enormous investments in our parks, both in capital improvements and personnel, planning. If you come to any of our county parks these days, you're going to see an exceptional quality product. Beautiful signage, well-maintained facilities, great staff. We have a park ranger program, doing education now. It's been a major achievement of the county executive. We're very proud of it. Our golf program, I think, is very well-known, folks that respect quality golf. Love our courses. Grover, Cleveland, and Alma are in great shape. And we're eager to sort of bring the skills that we have as a park manager to the town of Amherst. Liz covered some of this. We have over 10,000 acres. I guess we'll be getting close to 1,100 if we bring this property on. 35 properties. We run 114 structures, 13 buildings, 123 campsites, 46 restrooms. We have a large staff, 92 folks, 74 of which are blue collar in the field at our ASME bar and unit. We take planning very seriously. The county maintains a master plan that is updated on a regular basis. The last major overhaul was 2018, but there are annual improvements to it. We also, if you go to our county parks recently, you've been seeing year by year, new signage, new cohesive signage and branding, new wayfinding, new park trails to have a better way of finding your way around the parks and having a cohesive look. Those have been rolling out across the entire system. That's been a great success as well. Erie County annually spends, or in 2025, will spend over 13 Erie County annually spends, in 2025, will spend over $13.5 million in our parks. We do bring in some revenue, but the vast bulk of that is county share expense. In the capital program that you see, just in the past four years, from 2020 to 2024, we spent over $30 million in improvements in our parks. Major improvements in shelters, bathrooms, new facilities, roadways, parking lots, equipment for the field, new parks, playgrounds. I think at this point, nearly every single one of our heritage parks has at least one accessible playground. Some of them have two, like Chestnut Ridge. In 2025, you see an additional, you know, a few million dollars of investment there, and we just approved our 26 capital budget with millions more of investment in all of our county parks. Just to touch on some of the constant continual improvement, we're always looking for ways to improve the parks. There's some projects underway, improvements to drainage, cart paths over at Elma, the dock at Chestnut Ridge, over at the commissioner's cabin, additional roadwork. We're always looking to keep our parks in great quality. That's part of our commitment for the county for this project, is that you're going to have a high-quality park maintained for years to come. Additional improvements here, you can see the Shank House very close to Amherst over at Grover Cleveland. That's one of the oldest buildings in the county. That's been rehabilitated into a new parks office and museum, some more inclusive playgrounds. We have some pickleball and tennis courts, always popular there as well. So this is our conceptual plan for Willowdale. The area in the dark green will be the actual golf course with the holes numbered out there. Like Liz said, seven of the holes will be the original from the original 1921 course. Two are from the older ones. Then the green area above that is going to be the passive park area, and I'll show you a slide in a little bit that's going to cover what we plan to do up there. If you haven't been to the site yet, or, you know, town board members, definitely do a tour if you haven't seen it yet. But even from the exterior, it's a beautiful property. There's a lot of wildlife there, great for bird watching, a lot of beautiful natural features. The trees are incredible because of the age of the property. It's going to be beautiful and be great for Amherst residents and county residents to have access to enjoy the property. You can see from Liz's map as well, the phase-two transfer portion where you guys are going to knock out the playground, bathroom, and parking lot, and then the clubhouse as well. We will be constructing for the golf course, a temporary starting shack, and also a concession air. The clubhouse for now will be mothballed to keep it weatherproof while we make long-term plans to preserve the structure. There's a shot of the passive park from above and some of the activities that occur in our passive parks, like snowshoeing, skiing, picnicking, bird watching, et cetera. As Liz mentioned, this is going to bring the first Erie County park to Amherst. You're our largest town, second-largest municipality overall behind Buffalo, so this is a great asset. And you can see we have facilities all over, but we're fairly south towns, to an extent here. So this is a nice chance to bring a nice facility to the north towns, to our more densely populated areas. The Erie County legislature has already acted. We have already approved the action in a bipartisan fashion that is good to go. So that includes the capital funding Liz spoke about, as well as the opposition on our end. Our folks are good to go on that front. Again, bringing resources to Amherst here. And actually, I think this is an older version. We're missing a couple by slides here. We had some file issues earlier. Darn, okay. Well, it's a little hard to see here, but we are planning several running loops and walking trails around the park. There's going to be a 5K loop, a two-mile loop, and another smaller loop of one mile. Those are all being planned out by our partners at CNS Engineering. And I just want to hit on again, the financial pieces that Liz talked about is a key point here. So between the 6.8 million we've authorized for this year, as well as the 2.4 million authorized by legislator Vinyl, originally, we're looking at over $9.1 million of county investment in the facility, already well ahead of the amount that the town bonded for the project. Parks are expensive to operate. This is going to be around a $1 million per year, an annual operating expenses to the county. We're going to have seven full-time staff assigned to the park and 11 seasonal employees working the golf course and running other seasonal activities. That's a major expense. Part of the costs here are also the environmental remediation piece that we talked about. So it sounds a little scary, the contaminants there, but these are our heavy metals that are associated with pesticides and fungicides. So you go to any golf course in America, you go to Pebble Beach or Augusta, if you test their greens and tee boxes, they probably have the same levels of metal. But because Mensch wanted to dig and build properties there, it got tested, DEC knows about it. Once DEC knows about it, you got to do something. So we have a comprehensive plan that is fully approved by DEC. There were two rounds of soil testing at every single tee box, every single green, all the fairways, checking for the levels to make sure we're meeting the correct levels. And so our mediation plan is going to involve 16 of 18 greens. We'll have to be completely, the whole top removed, new soil brought on, and then recovered up. Eight of the tee boxes, same deal there, dug up, recovered with clean soil. And again, this plan has been fully approved by the DEC. So again, our overall, you know, main pitch here is we're protecting green space. This is going to be parkland. Parkland is very hard to alienate parkland. Once parkland is parkland in New York State, it is very hard to unmake it from parkland. So this is a generational commitment to keep this as a green space, which we know residents care about quite a lot. We're giving the public access to a property that was previously closed, so every resident, regardless of whether they can afford a country club membership or not, can enjoy the beautiful property. We're going to create new recreational opportunities. The responsibility shifts to the county, including that heavy environmental responsibility. So those are our top lines there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ben from anybody on the board?
Thank you, Ben. Just a couple of quick questions. How much revenue do your county golf? Right now, with our outbound course, we bring in approximately $300,000 per year. How much revenue do you anticipate that the golf course went open that will go back to the county?
So right now, for our two 18-hole courses, last year, we made $1,056,000. So we anticipate revenue of probably, on the high side, around a quarter of a million dollars if we're lucky from this park.
And that will offset the $1 million that you'll be putting in annually in terms of staffing and maintenance?
It'll help somewhat, yeah.
Okay, great. And right now, I know you noted 11 and a half million dollars of the county budget is towards Erie County parks and recreation?
Yeah, over 13 million, I believe, yeah.
Wonderful. They do a great job. I love the county parks. I know I've said it before, I'll say it again over and over. I think you do excellent, but again, not a single one of those acres that, as a taxpayer, I'm helping to maintain are in my town, correct? As of right now?
None.
Okay. I think I had one last thing. Oh, the vote by the county legislature was, again, I believe, 10 to 1. What was the party makeup of the people who voted for it?
So it would have been seven Democrats, three Republicans voted in favor, and one conservative voted no.
And the Republican of the town of Amherst, legislator Green, I know legislator Vinyl has already given funds, as you mentioned. Legislator Green was a vote in support of this plan.
He was, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything further? No?
Thank you.
My understanding is that there are some speakers in opposition, and I will invite the speaker up.
Good evening, Supervisor Culpa. Dan Gag, Williamsville, New York. Good evening, Supervisor Culpa, Deputy Supervisor Levin, and board members and neighbors. The actions of the town board on Monday, August 18th, in passing two resolutions concerning the proposed sale of the Westwood site to Erie County violated the provisions of the Amherst Town Rules of Order for regular meetings. For that meeting, the agenda of items was required to be posted in the town office by Wednesday, August 13th at 12:00 PM, with publication of the agenda and meeting materials on the town website by Thursday, August 14th at 4:00 PM. When the agenda was published on Thursday, August 14th, for the August 18th meeting on the town website, it failed to contain the proposed intermunicipal agreement with Erie County and the purchase and sales agreement. The intermunicipal agreement and purchase agreement were not put up on the town website until Friday, August 15th at 1:00 PM, only after their omission was brought to the attention of the town clerk by concerned Amherst residents. The problem with the filing of the two complex contractual documents is that Amherst residents were unaware of the late filing going into the weekend and did not have sufficient time to review the documents prior to the board meeting Monday, August 18th. As acknowledged by Deputy Supervisor Levin in his statement, which appeared in the front page of the Buffalo News article on August 18th, the late filing of the agenda and two contractual agreements was a minor clerical error. I strongly disagree with his statement that the issue of the late filing was addressed quickly and in plenty of time before Monday's meeting because both agenda and meeting materials were required to be posted by the date set forth in the Amherst Town Board Rules of Order on August 13th and 14th. Under the circumstances, on August 18th, the board should have tabled the two Westwood resolutions until its next regular meeting in order to give Amherst residents sufficient time to review the two contract documents. The most egregious action of the board was the use of the consent agenda to pass the two resolutions addressing the intermunicipal agreement and purchase agreement utilizing the consent agenda while in executive session during the afternoon work session. Independent of the lack of transparency, this action by the board arguably violated the open meeting law because Erie County has set the price for the purchase of the Westwood site at $1. As the board well knows, Section 6.6 of the Amherst Town Board Rules of Order, the consent agenda was created to allow routine, non-controversial business items, including council members' reports or department head reports, communications, public improvement permits, et cetera, to be contained in one section of the agenda. As this board is well aware, the sale and transfer of Westwood site to Erie County for $1 has been extremely controversial, as evidenced by prior proceedings before the board and has recited in the Monday, August 18th Buffalo News front page article for a variety of reasons, including the fact that the town now contemplates selling and retransferring the Westwood site to Erie County for $1, when in 2023, it paid Mensch Capital Partners 7.75 million for the site, bonding off the purchase price and leaving Amherst residents to continue to pay the bond debt long after the proposed transaction. The use of the consent agenda to pass the two resolutions with respect to the Westwood site was a clear violation of the Amherst Town Board Rules of Order and was intentionally done by this board to avoid further on-the-record public discussion of the proposed sale and transfer of the Westwood site to Erie County for $1. Independent of the foregoing, there's an additional legal issue with the town's determination that Erie County would perform the secret review because of its conflict of interest in proposing the purchase of the Westwood site for which the town paid Mensch Capital 7.75 million to Erie County for $1. To avoid an Article 78 proceeding for the reasons which I have stated this evening, the board should table any further actions on Westwood site project until it consults further with town attorney Steve Benger. On August 18th, the board determined it would hold today's public hearing concerning the proposed sale and transfer of the Westwood site to Erie County. Normally, a public hearing is held prior to the passage of resolutions by the board, not after it has already taken action. As such, tonight's public hearing is nothing but political theater, designed to leave Amherst residents with the false impression that they have had input and been heard. I will tell you what is not political theater. It is the fact that in late 2023, the town of Amherst paid 7.75 million for the Westwood site, bonded off the purchase price, was unable to develop the site, and this board has thrown up your collective arms and is now literally giving away the strategic and valuable land to Erie County. If the proposed sale and transfer of the Westwood site goes forward, it will join a long list of failed economic projects in the town of Amherst under the present administration. As the board is unaware, the town has been advised by its attorney, Steve Benger, that the passage of the two resolutions on Monday, August 18th, is subject to permissive referendum under town law, Section 64.2. This evening, I call upon the Amherst Town Board to do the right thing by passing a resolution requiring a referendum on the proposed sale and transfer of the Westwood site to Erie County on the ballot before the residents of the town of Amherst in the November 4, 2025 general election.
Good evening. Susan Blum, Old Lime Drive in Williamsville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I pray that you hear and understand my thoughts. We've lived in Amherst since May of 2000. When we moved here, Amherst was one of the safest communities in the country. Not any longer. Taxes are up, services are down, roads, water lines, and countless other issues are in need. I am absolutely opposed to selling the Westwood property to Erie County for $1. I understand there's a little play with that dollar, from what I've learned this evening, but no matter what, whether the money is coming from the town of Amherst, the county of Erie, the state of New York, or the federal government, whether it comes in the form of a grant, or God knows what, these are still our taxpayer dollars. I understand your point about the fact that it's spread over a bigger area. That's still our money, and we're still being charged, whether it comes out of Amherst's pocket or Erie County's pocket. It's still our money. We paid 7.75 million. In this economy, we should be getting at least triple what we paid. I'm not understanding. I'm not understanding. People talk about the 7.75 million. What about the expenses that, as taxpayers, we've incurred since this purchase on the property? What about the bond that we took to pay for this property? This is all money that we have put in and will be paying for some time to come. I think the government needs to stop taking bonds for all of these issues. Be conservative. Save the money for these projects that aren't necessary and fix the things that do need to be fixed. Environmental studies, fencing, upkeep, et cetera. How much is a good deal to turn, how much of a good deal is it to turn this over for $1? Who in this economy has a property that they sell for less than they've invested in it? Let's explore how Amherst can keep this property on the tax rules. Let's find out what it will take to make it a destination, a moneymaker for Amherst. We invested so much time in Station 12, in the Boulevard Mall, and other issues to no avail, to no avail. They are all dead. What can it hurt to see what this diamond in the rough can do for the town? It has much to offer. I believe that a referendum is in order. If the people speak and say they want it to be a county park, what is the harm in bringing this up for referendum to find out what the local taxpayers really want to do with this property? Let the people speak. Thank you.
Yes, Paul Glazer, Cimarron Drive. If this is such a great deal for the county, give us our 7.5 million dollars back to the town.
Sir, please address the, please address the board.
It's what were you saying?
Oh, it's a financial loser for the town.
Okay, okay. Please, please address.
Give them 7.5 million, so it's all a loser for our town. We've already paid. You're going to, you're.
I'm going to ask you to please address the board. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to provide information. And he shouldn't be either. He can come back up after.
There we go. All right, so the county's going to pay a lot of money. It's still our money. We're still paying for that. It's just spread over a bigger area. So give us our money back, our 7.75, and then the county can do whatever they want with it. Thanks.
Just a fairly quick comment. Julie Van Lenty from Snyder. The plans always look beautiful. I, for one, would love a beautiful park, but I, for one, also like the idea of having water pressure that works, having roads that are paved appropriately, having my taxes not go up 38.7% in five years, or personal taxes. And I just, I'm rather interested to see the semantics. The plans look beautiful. I am not a golfer. I've mentioned before, my father was an avid golfer, won districts, won everything in the area in his day. I grew up watching it, kind of immersed as a non-player. So I'm amused by the semantics that it's a world-class park with a nine-hole golf course. I don't know one world-class golf course less than 18 holes. The other thing is, it was, I mean, the plans are great. I love, you know, playgrounds, it's great. But the other thing is, if you notice in the sales pitch, the moneymaking for the county was listed for the 18-hole golf courses. was listed for the 18-hole golf courses. I'm not sure what a nine-hole is gonna really do. And it is still all of our taxes, so I, you know, just.
So I do want to just speak to that, Julie, really quickly. So they, the county owns 18-hole golf courses, so that's what they can estimate on. So it's a financial analysis.
Right, I understand that.
So it's going to be less than what they're bringing in, which is a little over a half a million dollar per 18-hole course. So it's even less than that, yes. Which is world-class park, world-class park. But what I think is really important here, and I think it goes back to what we were saying earlier, is that there is significant money that needs to be invested to get this open. I think what we've heard over the last two years is, right, 100%, whether it's a passive park, whatever we do, we have to invest money in it. And so the question here in front of us tonight is if we want to solely invest in Amherst, if we want to leave it gated and fenced up for years to come, or if we want the county to be able to use the money that they have set aside and do it. That's our question.
I think it has, has been demonstrated by Amherst concerned citizens and lots of people over the last couple of years. What we're concerned with is having a great park, but not adding to the tax burden that's already been made. And the, the plans, I mean, we've already heard that it was refused to have the Nickless Company come in, so there could be other options that may take it all, take, take a lot less cash for all of us off the tax rolls. Despite the beauty of the plan, thank you for the presentation.
Right. And three for-profit golf entities have operated this park, and they have all failed. And that was with it upkeep over years without 13, without 13 years of nobody touching it. Three for-profit entities have failed in profit-making-driven for an 18-hole golf course of world-renowned caliber on this parkland.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Colin Bishop, Ivyhurst Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I, for one, am in favor of this project. I believe that Amherst needs this park. I'm the father of three. I have spent a great deal of time in Amherst parks, visiting the different community parks, which are wonderful. But Amherst is sorely missing an opportunity like this. There is nothing like this nearby to us. We have to travel outside of Amherst for any park of which we're speaking. It would bring more people to town, bring people into the other businesses from outside of Amherst. It's a great opportunity to be more of the community we know we are. You know, it's been said several times tonight already that Amherst is the largest municipality outside of Buffalo, but we lack something like this, a true destination for a park opportunity. As far as the purchase goes, $1, I think too much is being made of that. Let's not focus on the price. That's not what this is about. It's not about the sale and what, what the town gets. It's about the.
It's not your turn. You're welcome to speak when it's your turn.
Everybody needs to be respectful of other speakers. Sorry. You all, you all ask for respect when you're at the microphone. I'm gonna ask you to do the same for other people.
Thank you. The focus on that is taking us away from what's actually the opportunity at hand. The only way this project happens is with the partnership with the county. The project is far too large for the town to carry that burden on its own. If we want to see this happen, we need the county's help and their ability to fund it, their ability to manage it. As an Amherst taxpayer, I would be paying a lot more for the town to continue holding this land and develop it its own. I don't want my taxes to go up in order to pay for this park. I want this park, and I want the county to pay for it. Thank you.
Tony Bataglia, good evening. I'm Miss Cambridge Curve. I'm speaking tonight on the Westwood issue, but it is not the only issue I would like to speak on, but tonight, just the Westwood. We have already spent too much money on Westwood's site and received no income from it. At this rate, our grandchildren will be paying for it for years. If sold to the county, we will be paying again and again in county taxes. How many times must we pay? I live in a home with my husband that has been in the Bataglia family since 1958, 67 years we've lived here. This past year, our taxes went up $955 in one year, and that's really not acceptable to go on. I would hope and pray that we will not be forced to sell our home because of reckless spending. Thank you.
My name is Steve Hunt. I'm an Amherst resident. I hadn't planned on speaking about this at all, but it just, one simple point, if, if the value that the town has paid for this is 7.75 million, and there's about 162 acres, that's only about $48,000 per acre. I'd suggest, especially in terms of some of the numbers that were kicked around here, about 220 and whatever per acre, I think if this property was exposed to the market locally and internationally, that we could certainly get the 7.75 million back, probably with a profit. I think the town should put it on the market instead of taking a dollar for it.
Good evening, Town Board members. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am here to speak in favor of the Westwood project.
Can you state your name and address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Rebecca Portom, 105 Los Robles. I'm here to speak in favor of the project. I was a wonderful grandparent all summer long, taking my grandchildren to all the parks that Amherst has to offer. And with things being so unaffordable for us to be out there with family activities, having another venue to go to the pools, to go to the parks, my kids are starting to golf. I would love to take my grandchildren to a nine-hole golf course. I've been to Erie County golf courses. I know they're well-maintained. I know that, that bringing it here will certainly add to Amherst. It will add to our, our ability to have a good time with our families. And I think if, if we have a golf course, that will bring in golfers, that will bring in other folks from other areas to our, our shops and our restaurants, so that will also add to our economy. I am in full favor. I urge you to move forward with this project. Sometimes these projects take forever. If you take a look at our, our neighboring town that had a golf course issue many years ago.
Can I ask everybody to just, please, allow the speaker to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you. I feel like I'm in, in my classroom today. So, you know, you, you can, a neighboring town had a similar golf issue, and most of the town residents cannot afford to go there. I, I'm thinking that this would be a great opportunity, nine-hole golf course, people can afford to go there, they can take younger children there, and the park situation with the, with the walking trails is a wonderful addition to the town of Amherst. So thank you very much for all the activities we have to offer.
Hi, good evening, Town Board. Karen Howard, 194 Roycroft in Snyder. First, I want to say that I actually appreciate that we'll finally be doing something with this stagnant property that's been sitting there for years, so I am glad to finally see some, what I hope will be movement after a lot of frustration, especially with other projects like Station 12, Boulevard Mall, and so forth. Second, I also want to shout out to Angela, who's been proactive in attempts to explain this project, you know, so that residents can understand, you know, the, I guess, the process and, you know, and so forth. So I thank you for that. That's been helpful. But also, I do want to say I'm still disappointed in the current plan that will add just a nine-hole county golf course so close to the town's existing 18-hole course, that will result in a smaller passive park than otherwise could have been. I just, I'm, I'm just, I, I like the idea that there's movement, but I'm disappointed with the overall resulting plan. And, and finally, I just want to say that I feel like this public hearing tonight is a formality, since it's legally required, and I don't get the sense that it'll actually, that the Town Board is actually considering residents' perspectives, so that's disappointing as well. I feel like it's pretty much a done deal, so I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Matt Plunkett, Northville Drive. Sitting here listening to this tonight, I'm asking myself, how in heaven's name did Amherst ever become the second-largest town north of New York City and one of the drivers of economic development in western New York without a county park? How in God's name were we able to do it all these years? And thank God the county's finally coming to the rescue. I, 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 I'm just curious as to, you know, the gentleman who works for Mr. Pollin Cars, when, when the golf course is put in, if your drive goes under one of the cars that's parked in the parking lot over there, what do you do? Take a drop or measure a couple of club lengths and take another shot? How, how is that gonna be handled? You know, this notion that somehow or another we're off the hook on this thing, as it said, we're paying for this place for another 23 years, no matter what we do with it. This board committed this town to that expense, and now we're stuck wearing it around our necks for 23 years. You know, is this a good deal? I don't know. There's precious little else out there, but who knows how hard anybody's tried? And, you know, as Ms. Marinucci just said, well, if you don't go with this, you'll be stuck with the, the cars and the fencing, which suggests to me this board has no plan at all to do anything unless this goes through. I mean, that, that was said here tonight by, by her. So, you know, that amounted to a threat. If you don't do this, get used to the fences and the cars, because that's what we're gonna leave there for you for the next 20 years or however long. And as far as, you know, the county's commitment to parks, assuming that's correct, that's all nice as long as Mr. Pollin Cars is there, but nobody knows what the next county executive's gonna do when they get in there. They may turn their back on parks completely, and the thing may go to hell in a handcart. Anything's possible. You can't predict the future about that. So, you know, this, you know, roll the dice on it and see what happens. The other thing, you know, two weeks from tonight is a big night in America, you know, it's the, the debut of the 34th season of Dancing with the Stars. And so it's, it's a Tuesday night, it won't be a Town Board meeting, so I'll be able to stay home and watch. I know I have it penciled in. And the reason I'm mentioning that is, one of the very first meetings where this stuff came up seriously was a few weeks back when the county filed its application for lead agency status on this project under Seeker. And, and what became clear during the course of that meeting was the colloquy that took place between the supervisor and Mr. Ben-Gur and Mr. Howard, who's not here tonight, that the seeker application submitted by the county seeking lead agency status had fatal defects in it that, under normal circumstances, should have required it being sent back to the county for a redo. The way we got off the hook on it is, when you require, when you seek lead agency status, I guess that's a type-two action under Seeker, that requires the completion of a short-form environmental assessment form. Instead, the county submitted a long-form EAF, which is typically used for type-one actions, and we said, well, since they submitted the long form in the first place, we don't have to worry about the mistakes that are contained in it, since it's screwed up in the beginning. I don't have a lot of faith in a process that begins that way, personally. I mean, that's a horrible start to get off with. The entity we're dealing with doesn't even know the right Seeker application to file on this project. I, that, that doesn't give me a lot of hope. You know, call me odd, but it just doesn't. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Donald Tucker. I live at 315 Wellingwood Drive in East Amherst. I am very impressed with the plans here. The work that was involved between the county and, and the town of Amherst, this was a lot of work to do. Is, is the plan perfect? No. You're gonna find a lot of people have disagreements over parts of it, but I think in general it's a very good plan. I think the burden of maintaining this, if the town was doing it, I think we would have had great difficulty in maintaining a project like this and spreading it out with the county and getting the county involved was very a good idea. Thank you.
William Pitts, Dodge Road, East Amherst, New York. As an Amherst taxpayer, I have a severe problem with you giving away our money again. You're giving it away for a dollar. So we're gonna lose as Amherst taxpayers, and then, if I believe I heard it right, Erie County says that this is a loser for them. So now we will lose again as Erie County taxpayers. When do we stop losing? If they want to buy it, sell it to them, fair market value.
Donna Chesnut, Heim Road, Getzville. I'm, just want to say I'm very much in favor of this project. I think there's no way the town could do it on its own. I'm excited to be able to golf that course again. I'm excited for the park, and I think it's a wonderful partnership, and I really want to see it go through. I don't think we should get stuck on the details. Let's not turn it into the peace bridge project. Let's just build a park.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and council members. My name's Dominic Locata. I live on Robin Road in Getzville. I'm a proud Amherst resident for the past 16 years, and I've lived in Erie County for about 35 years. I'm strongly in favor of this project. I was in favor of it when I first heard about it, and after hearing the two presentations this evening, I'm even more excited. So many of the words that were mentioned just hit me right in the heart. Farmer's Market. Where do we have a farmer's market in Amherst currently? I'm, I'm looking, well, closer, closer. I'm looking forward to more access. Thank you. I always appreciate the extra knowledge. Food Truck Rodeo. Love food trucks. You can tell the two things I've mentioned have to do with food. I'm a bicyclist. I'm a bird watcher. I have two children in college, and when they come home, the first thing we do is we take a walk through Walton Woods. Privileged to have such a nice park close to home. So looking forward to this. And I know people seem to be hearing what they want to hear in different, different aspects of this project. What I'm hearing is, this will cost us no additional money. We will have to invest no additional money, and yet we will benefit for years to come. We will benefit. To me, it sounds like a no-brainer, so thank you for this bold initiative. Thank you for your commitment to sustainable growth.
Jane Cox, Harlem Road. Let's see. The town paid about $8 million in bonds to purchase the Westwood property, and this was after years and years of discussion about what is gonna happen with this property, who's gonna buy it, how is it gonna be developed? There's a lot of people in this room that probably weren't listening. My concern is, the town is selling the land and giving up the title to the property, so we no longer have ownership of it. 170 acres in the center of town, prime real estate, and we lose control as residents of the town in working with the county on what development will happen in the park. When it's a town property and it's a town issue, we have public hearings, we have input with the town government, but I'm not sure we have that with the county, and I'm wondering what ability we're gonna have to make suggestions to the county park leadership about proposed projects in the park. Their nine-hole golf course will compete with our Audubon Golf Course, not that far apart. The county says it plans to mothball the clubhouse, although I did read somewhere that there was plans to use the clubhouse for county employee offices, where I suspect that facility would probably make a great rental facility, as it was in the past, for weddings and events, which would be lucrative to the county. And I'm just wondering what's in it for the Amherst taxpayers besides the fact that we still. still have to pay the bonds, but do we have anything as far as input to where it goes from here? Thank you.
My name is Jennifer. I live on Washington Highway. I'm a new Amherst resident, so this is my first board meeting. Thank you for supporting this project. The Erie County Parks are a jewel of our community, and I'm very excited to have one here in Amherst. I think it's crazy that we don't have one currently. I know I'm looking forward to using it, and that's, these are the kind of projects that I want to see my tax dollars being spent on. So, I'm excited for this project. I want to thank Mr. Swanikamp and Ms. Burakowski for their presentations. I think they gave a lot of information, and I think this is a great project, and I'm looking forward to using the park.
Good evening, Supervisor Brian Culpa, Town Board members and meeting attendees. My name is Thomas Frank, and I want to thank you for allowing me three minutes to speak publicly on the town of Amherst, New York, Central Park Greenway. That the county has the county park, and it's based on the Elica Creek drainage. The Elica Creek and the drainage, as far as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the metadata, you just don't show any of it, that it's based on Elica Creek. The town of Amherst, Central Park Greenway, is based on the Elica Creek drainage. Elica Creek is the lifeblood of Erie County and the 1.5-square-mile village of Williamsville and the 52-square-mile town of Amherst. This is the basis for the built environment that, as far as the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, if you're in a flood plain, you've got to buy your own flood insurance. And in the village here where the dam went down, people that bought, that get flooded, the rate went up four times as far as their private insurance. What is suggested here is a management and maintenance of the water lines, the sewer lines, and the highway storm sewers in the town. And this is, as far as the county, Erie County and Niagara County were given $450 million, part of the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's relicensing settlement through 2050. That the, and what's most interesting is that back in 2015, that the village of Williamsville put the connection to the Glen Park Joint Board to the Amherst State Park. Now, these are all connected. As far as the Westwood, this was done, this plan was done back in 2016. That it was not implemented. As far as the Greenway, an intermunicipal cooperation agreement with the New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, that you have historic connections to the power project as well as the Erie Canal National Heritage Corridor. That, you know, as far as the Greenway, this is a part of the statewide Greenway trails, including the final generic environmental impact statement back in 2021.
Mr. Frank, sorry. Respectfully, your time is up.
And my last suggestion is that the, you should consider, instead of calling it the Willow Dell, that you should call it the Willie, the Willie...
Parks. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. The Tom, thank you.
I can't find it. It's...
Thank you.
It's just a suggestion for the final name. Oh, it's the Lily, the Willie Lily Dell, which would be...
Thanks, Tom.
I'd just like to reiterate that I understand this is eligible for a permissive referendum, and why wouldn't we do that? We've heard, even in this room, many, you know, there's probably half and half. I'm for it, I'm against it. And to make that decision tonight, just by you three that are sitting here?
Good point.
That's a lot, that's a lot of, yeah, I think we need a referendum on this. I think the people should be allowed to vote on this. Thank you.
Hello, Town Board members. Thank you for a few moments here. Steve Meyer. I live on School Street in Williamsville. I got to say, this is kind of weird. I mean, I never expected there to be so much opposition for a public park. Hey, we've got to be one of the only municipalities in the country where there's this much opposition to a public park. And I got to say, it looks pretty sweet. I mean, I heard something about walking trails, a playground, a cultural monument, an event space with a, I don't know what it means, but a food truck rodeo. That sounds pretty cool to me. This place sounds pretty awesome, and it's almost as if the people who are against it aren't actually against the park, but are just against the board for their own politically expedient reasons. And...
We don't get into politics here. Thank you.
Maybe they just want their own guy to win in November. But listen, we have a chance to unite on this, okay? We have a chance to come together, not as separate voices, but as a community with a shared vision. A park like this is more than a green space. This is a legacy for future generations for our town. Okay? We're not selling our '78 Camaro, and they're not going to take that car and then drive it off to the South towns. We're taking a piece of property here in the town, and the county is going to invest millions of dollars in it, make it way better than it is now, at no cost to Amherst taxpayers. That sounds amazing to me. So...
Be respectful. If you wish to speak, you have an opportunity.
So, with that being said, I have one final note. I have this friend, she's an elementary school teacher. She teaches second grade, and it's really funny, you know? She has these students that kind of like pull your hair and hit each other and things like that. She does a really good job of getting them to respect each other when they have things to say. And I've been watching groups at this town board meeting for months now, and it's really unpatriotic and despicable to see how some people behave here. So, I want to thank the town board members for everything that they do in the face of that, and I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
One comment here. We've got two golf courses almost right adjacent to each other, ones across the street from the other. We have a three-hole, or a three, or three-nine-hole executive course. We have an 18-hole at the Audubon, and now we're going to put in another golf course right there on North Forest, okay? So, the county's going to run the nine-hole. The town's going to run Audubon. And by the way, Audubon made $433,000 last year on that golf course, okay? Not 300K. All right. It's pretty ironic that you're going to have all these three golf courses competing against each other. Now, lately, you can see Audubon's getting a lot of play, all right? Just go by and look at the cars there, the all the good weather that we're having. So, as far as competition goes, now, here's one other thing you need to look at. If we turn around and have a premier 18-hole golf course, because Audubon is far from being premier, turn that into your park system, all right? And then you can do all sorts of things, because it's basically flat ground. So, it's a lot easier to turn around. Now, I'm going to go one step further. Let me, let me put a hypothetical question. If you were in business, would you purchase a piece of property for $7.75 billion, and a couple of years out of the goodness of your heart, you decide to give it away for a measly $1? Now, that $1, okay, we're paying $775 million in bonds that's going to go till 2048. Now, the taxpayers are still paying $7.75 million. No, that's not, we're not being given any money in return. So, it needs to be looked at from there. So, yet here tonight, you have a choice contrary to your friends' advice to hold on to it, develop it as a golf course. So, what say you? Common sense says no, because you have other properties that are adjacent to this, all right? That Audubon could go for the playgrounds, the park, et cetera, and be easy to develop. All right? Leave it go. Willie would go for 18 holes. So, tell me what you're going to do, and I say no from my aspect. So, thank you very much, Town Board.
Steve Lippett, 10 Sherwood Court. I have no problem with the park. I have a problem with the giving the dollar, the, I want the $7.75 million reimbursed to the, to the town. But it's not just one project, and it's not just one $7 million. Any developer who wants to do a project just knocks on the door of the IDA, and they get millions and millions and millions of dollars, and it's cumulative. It adds up to a tax burden that's beyond belief. And not everybody in this town is a millionaire that can just pay all these taxes. You're taking away vacations and everything from certain, from certain people, and they don't appreciate it. And then you raise the taxes so much. I mean, how many years of all your years here have you raised the taxes over the tax cap, when you never should have done it? A well-run operation never should have had to raise taxes over the tax cap, and you've done it every year but one. So, this is, this is just ridiculous. It just keeps spiraling out of control, and something needs to change, and something needs to change quick. Thank you.
And speaking to a comment that was made earlier about the park, it is our taxpayer dollars that was used to purchase the park. It was our taxpayer dollars that were used to get the equipment to upkeep the park. It has been a lot of money that is spent to now give it over to the county, free of charge pretty much. Great. Nobody's against parks. Nobody. What we're against is our money being used for something and then going to waste because of poor planning and poor leadership. And to use the term unpatriotic is kind of funny when it's unconstitutional for a town board to not put this up for permissive referendum, to let the taxpayers and we, the people, vote on whether or not we want this park. That's unpatriotic. Thank you.
John Trayber, Mount Vernon. I just would like to reiterate what she says. There's three people to make a decision tonight. You've got a very divisive issue. The park plan looks beautiful. Why not just let the people decide in November? It's only two months away. Thank you.
How ironic that we are here again, dealing with the same fundamental issues that have surrounded the Culpa-Laban-Westwood-Central Park scheme. However, this time, they have enlisted all of Erie County to contribute their money to bail out Amherst's failed leadership. Unfortunately, the same crooked playbook is being used to ensnare the county. Keep them in the dark of details, including all expenses, and shove it down their throat to live with and pay for forever. The county having a multimillion-dollar surplus only means the people paid too much to begin with. The money should go back to the people, perhaps used for their priorities, like clean water, clear of lead and poop, safe streets and environment for themselves and their children. Erie net completed. Certainly not a slush fund for leaders who have proven to be grossly irresponsible and shady to pass along to their fellow grifters for purposes of retaining power and providing more riding time on their profitable, all-abor, one-party gravy train. Put this dubious undertaking to a referendum. Let Amherst and the rest of Erie County residents get all facts and figures and have a voice and choice of where their hard-earned money is being spent. Thank you.
Don Smith, North Lawn. Been a memorable evening. When I look at the situation as we have it today, we spent a lot, we spent quite a bit of money, but there's lots of reasons for what we spent it on, and whether it was a good idea or not, we should probably figure that all out. $7.75 million plus interest and over 25 years, or whatever the number was, it will add up to more than $7.75 million, probably closer to, what, 11, 12, something, I don't know. I don't know what the number is. So, the number is going to be larger, and it's going to be a significant number, and it'll be in the millions more than $7.75. Okay, so we got something. It's an asset, okay? We were going to use it for something. I know that. If the, if the county came in and said, we're going to put in $10 million in escrow into your bank account that guarantees that we build everything we promised to build, then it would be better. I think it would be a better idea. I like it. But all I've got is a plan on paper from the county, period. It's talking points. It's not a dollar more than I got in my pocket. We need something solid from the county, a commitment, and if they can put in $10 million, $15 million in escrow to the, to the, to the town of Amherst that promises that that money will be spent and will not be taken out, then I get that. But they're never going to do that. They can't. So, what do we got? We've got $7 million we're going to give to the county, and we've got a promise that we're hoping that they keep. Whether they do it or not, whether they screw it up or not, whether they do it right or whether they do it wrong, these are people that do things, and they can do things wrong too. So, let's try to figure out what the people of Amherst really want. You haven't done that. You've got to do that. People really, Brian, you have to. It's got to get done.
It's almost like we should hold public hearings.
I understand that. With all, excuse me, everybody, please, 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 please. What we need is answers. We need an answer, excuse me, we need answers on what we're going to do. The one lady that came up here that everything is a done deal scared the hell out of me, how good, how smart she, how close she got to the truth. Okay? I wish it wasn't that way. I wish we had a, I wish we all had a voice in this whole process. Frankly, I'm afraid, I'm sorry, that we probably don't. We're probably talking and trying to people who've already made up their minds, and that also scares me. I don't know what we got here. You know, people are going to start making up their mind whether they want to stay in Amherst or not after this goes through. There's going to be an inflow and outflow of people, and the question is, what's it going to look like? Thank you very much.
Christopher Angoski, Mill Street. Never in my wildest imagination, 25 years ago when I started this, we'd be here tonight with this type of conversation. I've served the town three times as Recreation Commissioner, primarily put on the commission by three different town boards because of my background in golf. Matter of fact, I was reminded before I came tonight, I got a text that 50 years ago, I finished second in the Erie County Junior Championship at Alma Meadows, and my very first round of golf was at Grover Cleveland. So, I'm very familiar with these golf courses. Just some comments. I haven't heard, you know, this is the second consecutive meeting. I have yet to hear someone come up with a credible plan for Westwood. I hear a lot of complaining. We don't want to spend any money. What, you know, we've got $7.75 million into this. Well, if it sits there with a fence around an overgrown field with no trespassing signs and a parking lot, how much more do you think we're going to have? It's time. There was countless meetings. I've got a file this thick on Westwood, right here. There was countless meetings with the community. The community... The community wanted it to be a park. Bottom line, they wanted it to be a park. All right? I never agreed with that. I wanted more active recreational for it. Nine holes brings revenue to this park. The county has a history, especially in the last 10 years, of doing amazing things with the county golf courses. Alma Meadows is one of the greatest success stories I've seen in my career, and I've played golf courses all over the country. The work that they put in at Grover restoring that is remarkable. You know, I, you know, when I first heard about government doing this at, uh, Westwood, I said, you know, based on what's gone on, I've dealt with with the town the last 25 years, I was a little bit reluctant. But the county has proven that they can do it, and they've done it. They have transformed Alma Meadows, which was a dust bowl, into a premier facility. Matter of fact, you cannot even get on that golf course because it's so crowded, because it's the best value in upstate New York. And Grover Cleveland, they have spent millions of dollars bringing that back up to what it used to be. And a majority of people playing over there are Amherst residents. Now, this talk of this permissive referendum, folks, you vote the way you want to vote tonight. If these people are, think that the Amherst residents are so much against this, let them go out and get the signatures for the permissive referendum. Let's see how that works. With respect to the dollar, the dollar joint venture, all right? Dollar sale. This is a joint venture between the county and the town. All right? If the town were to do this and spend $15 million, these people, the same people in here would be screaming and yelling. Something has to be done with this property. It's an embarrassment to this community that it's gone on this long. He didn't create the problem, the previous supervisor did. And I'll, and I'll explain, I'll explain at this, I'll explain at the next public expression just what happened and why we're here today. Now, he did compound it a little bit with this idea of a theater and bringing the museum onto it, which is not what the residents want. If you, you know, I've heard things like, "Why do we make this an 18-hole golf course?" That was my original plan. But in today's dollars, it would cost the town to bring this golf course back to an 18-hole golf course $30 million. $30 million, folks. We don't have that money. All right?
Respectfully, your time is up.
All right. I'll talk later.
Mr. Culpa, there's been a lot of people that have come up to the microphone tonight to express their concerns, and I heard you say just now, tonight, that there should be a public hearing, but I think you need to hear the people, and I think the people will speak in a referendum, and I think we should wait until the vote is casted and let it come to a referendum. And that's what we ask, and that we, we do this finally the right way.
We are in public hearing. Just a reminder, I just want to remind everybody that you do need to state your name and address. This is a recorded public hearing.
My name is Ann O'Perah. I live in Delta Road. I have been a resident of Amherst on and off since I was five. I attended school here, and Amherst is an exceptional town in this state and in this country. I'm here on another matter of the rapid transit line. I didn't know about this. But one thing I would encourage is we have a very solid group of citizens who value this town. And if they're unhappy with the plan that you proposed, responsible civic leaders would take a step back and say, "Wait a minute. We have a whole lot of people who don't agree. Why don't you have an extended period? Why don't you listen to the people who voted you into office, who are saying, 'We're very divided on this. We don't agree on the money. We don't agree on the plan. We don't agree on giving up the title. We don't agree on a lot of things.'" What is the problem with giving it more time, discussion, and a better agreement? That is what Amherst represents. We have different faiths, different cultures, different backgrounds, different genetics. But we have fought to make Amherst a very safe and respected town around Buffalo. It is considered one of the safest places in New York State. And yet, we come to a meeting, and people are not being respectful because they don't feel heard. All you have to do is take the time, please, take the time to say, "Well, we were hired to listen to you. We were hired not to make snap decisions or to create this kind of discord. We are neighbors. We have a responsibility to act like neighbors in our town government." If you have so many people with such diverse opinions, you were right, challenge them, bring them, pick, bring signatures, but also you challenge yourself. Do we have the right to make this kind of decision? If it's not even, what I understand, might not have been done legally? Do you want to go to court and fight? Why? Why can't there be a time of discussion and better agreement, or at least people who have two different opinions meet face-to-face and discuss it? We're seeing it in our national government. It's a disgrace. Are we going to bring this to Amherst? We can do a better job than that. We are neighbors, and I am proud to live in the town of Amherst. This doesn't represent it, this division. Go back, rethink this, so you have people who can talk to each other as neighbors.
Are there other speakers?
Dave Howard, 194 Roycroft Boulevard. I'd like to thank Angela for putting out some comments earlier this week that helped probably clarify at least her viewpoints on this project. Just going back to, I think, what the Amherst representative was saying, that there was many times where a golf course and a park were mentioned, and I just want to clarify that. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and it was either a total park or a total golf course, not half and half. That being said, I originally was against this project. I just can't see spending over $7 million for land and giving it away, but to tell you the truth, I don't think anything's going to be done unless we partner up with the county. The only concern I have, and I've, you guys know, I've sent you emails, is the way this park is set up and how golf balls fly and where those park people are going to be, I'm not saying you're going to get hit. I've worked at the golf course now four years, and I think I got grazed once, and I'm all over the place. But Glen Oak used to allow the people that lived on that property to use the golf, um, the cart paths for recreation. They don't do that anymore for that reason, because of liability. And just looking at hole three, hole five, and hole six that are adjacent to the park, you're going to have balls sprayed over there, and there was mention of maybe a berm or whatever, but a berm will not take, I mean, we just put up a big fence on the, on the driving range. Well, it didn't stop anything. They're hitting it over the fence. So, so I'm, that's the only thing I'm concerned with. I guess what I really want, I want it as a whole park, not a golf course, because it's going to take away revenue from ours. I don't care what anybody says, this is going to take your $300,000 that, the golf course is making money, and it can kind of stay in itself. It's never going to be great, but it's slowly getting better and better. But once you add this, that revenue is going to go down. How much it's going to go down? Nobody really knows, but it's going to go down. So just something to consider. I, I mean, I'm ready to move forward and do something, but I'd really like it to be a passive park, and that can be done relatively cheap on all sides, and just forget the golf course altogether.
Ray Berry, 110 Thistle Lee. I'm, it's a shame that this sat there for this long and that, you know, like, there's people, like Chris has great ideas about golf. He knows golf. When the plan first came out with the theater and all that, I got 10 grandkids, I live right across the street there, that's not what a lot of the people were looking at. And I've heard things tonight, like, it's a Democrat, it's a political thing. I'm not a Democrat or a Republican, or, or a Republican. I just want something done there, you know? And I got 10 grandkids. I'd love to go across the street, you know? And, you know, this is, to me, it's a taxpayer and issue and money spending. And a lot of this stuff that we've seen over the years, they sound like good ideas when they come out, but they, they don't come to fruition because all kinds of things come up that we can't, that we don't know, you know? And we're $196 million in debt. We're going to have this debt still with us for 23 years, and then we're going to end up with more things. And, you know, it's, somebody said, "When are we going to stop losing money? When are we going to get out of the hole? When we stop, when we stop voting like losers and this stuff happens?" That's all I got to say.
John Raiden, 25 Kmart Drive. You know my feeling on the park. I've already expressed it on a different agenda. But I, then I hear about this referendum and put it up for a vote. I don't know where that, those voices were when Barry Weinstein decided to buy this, turn it in, sell, to sell it to Mensch, and then not even thinking about the tens and tens of millions of dollars, where was that going to come from to put sewers in and infrastructure? This, this park is a much better alternative than just, than what's sitting there now. And what do you, do you really want a subdivision? Do we really want another subdivision?
Good evening, Tom Board. As I said earlier, my name is Stan Sliw. I live at 166 Cranbourne Lane, which is across the street from this proposed park. And I also, for purposes of transparency, want to reiterate that I was the town attorney under the Republican Barry Weinstein for two years, and then until my retirement in 2022. I promised my wife I would polite, be polite, refrain from snarkness, which is very difficult for me to do, and I apologize in advance. Apparently, other people don't have such qualities. I am strongly in favor of the approval of the town supervisor to sign the PSA which is attached to the resolution, which is 2025/743. And I apologize in advance for stumbling, but I have Parkinson's, and it makes it very difficult to talk, but I feel that this is an important enough issue that I have to put that aside and indicate why I believe that people are being misinformed in opposing this. To clear up a number of factually false assertions, once there was a vote against, there was a number of handcuffs placed upon the use of this parcel by a number of other people, including the DEC and the vote against bonding musical fair, what's the town supposed to do with this? That's a big question. Secondly, I want to express a number of factual statements to advise those that are not, who are living in the real world but not in a fantasy world of their own making. In fact, sitting here patiently listening to other speakers, especially those who opposed the PSA, I'm reminded of an old attorney saying, "If the facts are in your favor, argue the facts. If the law is in your favor, argue the law. If nothing's in your favor, pound on the table and call your opponents a scoundrel." And I've heard a lot of pounding on the table, but no facts. Let me clear some stuff up. I know that the resolution has attachments that are over 320 pages long. I wonder if people have actually read them? I did. If they would, they would soon learn that the exchange and the consideration for the purchase of this park is not a dollar. And I don't know where the people are thinking of this. The contract is clear. There's other considerations being advanced by the county. Once the town transfers the park, this parcel to the county, it's their problem, no longer the town's problem. Number one. Number, number two, if development was a real option for this park, why didn't Mensch do it within the 10, 14 years that they owned the property? Could it be that there's no sewage? Could it be because the town board in 2008, under Republican leadership, passed a resolution rezoning it? Could it be because the DEC won't permit any activity on the park without their approval? Why did Mensch sell it? And, and you have to ask that question. And as the development option of the park, of the, of the land as a golf course, Mr. Gancowski indicated it costs $30 million to convert it over. I have to ask people. We have a, this golf course has been in mothballs for 14 years. What's the state of the irrigation system? How much will it cost to replace that? Let the county figure that out. That's their problem, not ours. We're only here to vote to approve the sale to the county and the joint, joint enterprise in operating the parcel after that. These talks about what proposed plans are, we don't know that yet. We're not going to know that, but it's better than having a golf, a vacant parcel of land that's being used as a parking lot by the drivers. Thank you very much.
Supervisor, if I may. Couple things. So we talk about this being a financial loser, and I know somebody referred to what the county representative had said, and that may be true. But what we're looking at here is a park, right? The fair market value of this property would require its development, which residents have said for 15 years they do not wish to see there. So if we wish to sell this property and develop it, it would go against the wishes of the residents and my year and a half on the board, what I've heard from everyone, and my months before that, talking to residents about this plan. A couple other clarifications. We did not approve the PSA at the end of the August 18th meeting. We approved the notice for this public hearing. We do not intend to vote tonight because we wanted to leave that comment period for people to think about it, as we do with most of our land decisions, for those of you who have been here for months and years, along with myself. We also, in the previous, when we approved the county as lead seeker agency, we were not approving the underlying application, which is why fatalities in that application could be fixed by the county. We were solely approving them to be the lead seeker agency in that previous resolution. We also live in a republic, and it's really, really important that we remember what that means. We vote for representatives. I have said for years before I was a council member, because I live in the neighborhood of this park, that I want this park to be open. I want it to be usable. I do not golf. I don't think I will ever golf. It's not something for me. I also don't like birds, so bird watching is not exciting to me, but it is exciting to others. And I do have three children, and I do have exciting things that I want to do on this land. Our options tonight, as I tried to say earlier in Ms. Van Lanty, I know that we have a good rapport, so I was in no way trying to attack you, and I appreciate, thank you, because I would never want that. And many of you who have here, the Howards, others, we've disagreed on many things, but always respectfully and with lots of conversation, and I thank you all for that because I do think that's my job. But our choice tonight and what we're looking at here is leaving it fenced in and trying to figure out and do more off-pays and years and years of this kind of discussion, which have already been going on for nearly 20 years. Entering into the deal as the county has offered us, Mr. Smith, you asked about escrow. That is what the county resolution does. It creates $6.89 million in an account solely for the park. So the county, in a bipartisan fashion, as the county representative said, has already put that money out there. They've said that they're intending to do this, so that gets us moving here. Anything that the town of Amherst chooses to do with this park, if we keep it, we will be fronting all of those costs, which likely means more bonds, might likely means more debt, and it likely means a higher cost to town taxpayers. So if people do wish to see us sell this at a fair market value, because it will net lots of money, the most expensive real estate in the city of New York is in Central Park. They are still not selling that for development, and I think we And I think we all, as a town, and what I've run on, what I want to be here as a council member, need to remember that the public amenity and the public benefit of a park of this size in our town is worth some financial consideration. It is, like one of the speakers said, where I want my tax dollars to be going, and is the reason that I feel strongly about this proposal. I've thought about things, I've talked about it, I've tried to put my thoughts out there ahead of time, I've responded to your emails, I've received emails both for and supportive it. When I talk to people in my neighborhood, at Dash's, at PTA, at church, everybody loves this idea that comes to me. I can't say that means it all across the board. My emails are about as evenly split here, but again, I am who I am, I am what I ran on, and I stand for the things that I've always said as a council member, which is getting this park open and accessible. And to me, at this time, this is the fastest way to do this, and that's what makes me excited. I also think it's going to be a jewel, and I think we're all going to love it, and I'm really, really excited about what's going to come of it. But as of now, that's where I stand in clarifying those last things.
With that said, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? There is no vote on this this evening. Thank you all for your comments. The next item on the agenda is public expression. I'm going to motion to open public expression at this time. Any second. Just wait a minute.
Yeah. Did you guys sign in originally? Supposed to sign in before, but...
Yeah. There's a couple that aren't, so... We're going to give everybody just a minute to leave, and then we'll continue with public expression. Yep, there's one speaker ahead of her, so that's Mr. Pitts, and then...
Sit for a minute.
Pitts.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, there is a motion to open public expression. Any second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Hi, I'm going to read what I'm going to say. My name is Anno Para, I live on Delta Road currently. I'm talking about the rapid transit line that they want to put down Niagara Falls Boulevard for Maple through UB and to the Autobahn. My first issue is safety. It will change the safety of the area. I worked in Buffalo Public Schools for eight over 18 years. I've taught in a private Christian, Chigewaga Sloan in West Seneca, and in Buffalo. There is a distinct difference between the safety in Buffalo schools and in the suburbs and in Amherst. I have been threatened to be killed multiple times. I've been knocked flying four feet off the ground, dropped on a cement floor. I had a child come within inches of punching me in the face. The violence they don't talk about in Buffalo Public Schools is much greater than you have any idea. There are reports that are missed, disappear before they hit or when they hit the principal's office, they disappear at City Hall, they disappear in Albany. The violence is not reported accurately. There are kids who brought knives and guns and tried to burn the school down. I had a second grader talk about in my hearing, quite at length, on how he could arrange to have me killed or kill me personally. Second grade. I taught the worst drug dealer in the city of Buffalo, teenage drug dealer. I was told because a black teacher knew and was told this guy was dangerous. I taught this teenager who killed somebody on the subway and was wearing an ankle monitor, and we were never told in the alternative schools. You are talking about bringing a population that will not cross that city line because they know the difference. I was threatened, and they, I said, they said, where do you live? I said, I live, when you report an accident, you hear the sirens coming. And they said, oh, no, we won't follow you home. They know the city line. You're talking about bringing to that area what is next to UB South? The violence, the shootings, the gangs, the drugs, on a direct line to UB campus. They did it to Buff State. Buff State is not the same college. The students who go there don't pay their tuition, don't pay a lot of their expenses, and my daughters went there. My oldest went there before they were going for free, and my youngest daughter asked to transfer to Oneonta because she was afraid to go to Buff State. There is a difference in the population, and I know and I taught them, and I loved them, and I was a remedial reading teacher whose whole point was to help these kids not end up in prison. I paid my dues. Do I want to live in a town where you have a rapid transit line bringing this population to UB?
Respectfully, I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
But thank you.
So, thanks.
Liam Pitts, 1815 Dodge Road, he's Amherst, New York. I was at the, well, I wasn't able to attend the last planning board meeting, which is appointed by you folks, which had addressed 1789 Dodge Road for a development. But we don't want to develop in Amherst, but we want to develop next to me. Your people that you put in place told you it did not fit. You told me, Mr. Culpa, that you guys were only voting on the rezoning. How come Mr. Gill at that meeting said that we were misinformed? How come the planning department told me that we were misinformed, that you allowed for the development, they have to go and give it to you?
It's, that's categorically incorrect. We voted on the rezoning.
Well, then, why does the planning board tell me that they have to allow this development because you rezoned it? It does not have to be a major development. You know, I laugh, I hear people talk about being in this town for 20 years. That's cute. I've been here 57 years. My family's been here for 73, 74 years. Why, if your people tell you something doesn't fit, you take their regards in a letter that was written to this town board and throw it in the garbage and do what you want? Yes, you voted for us, the residents, but none of your other people voted for us, and you don't have any, what am I looking for? You don't have any impression over your people to vote or to help judge a project one way or the other? We waited until the one person that we had on that meeting, on this board, other than you, Brian, we waited for her to retire. We had a vote, or you had it, in a study that was supposed to take place, and it was supposed to be three months, two years later. And to the best of my knowledge, that study is still not adopted, but yet decisions were made off of those findings. But if you didn't adopt it, how can you use it as a voting point? And I love the fact that we ask questions and we come up here and we never get any answers. We get crickets. I know. It's ridiculous. So, have a good night.
Thanks.
My name is Jonathan Opara. I'm Anno Para's son. We live at Delta Road 460. Okay, so, we went to, Mom, you lift your glasses up here. We went to the meeting at the Sweet Home Middle School for the Metro Rail. I went up to your office and met with Jenny.
Jessica?
Jessica. Jessica. And so she's got, well, now you guys have, and we have receipt of, there's about 1,000 signatures. My mom's got copies of it. You guys have the original. It was put together by the store owner, Jeff Camer of Hector's Hardware. It's going to cost about a billion dollars on the most conservative side for the Metro Rail.
Can I ask a clarified question?
Yeah.
Did you say you gave us the original?
Yes, we haven't.
So, the town of Amherst and the NFTA are two different entities. The NFTA is an authority that's given capacity to do its work by New York State, parallel and separate to the town of Amherst. We're an agency that can weigh in with respect to an authority. We don't hold any authority in that decision. So the original really needs to go to the NFTA.
Is that really, is that really, this microphone, is that really true? Well, because it's going to go down, it's going to go down Niagara Falls Boulevard and Maple.
It doesn't matter. It's like National Grid can run power lines through the town, or the power authority could establish power generation, or SUNY could buy property and create a state, you know, building. We don't have any authority or sway. We do try to influence decisions and try to correct problems when we see them, but the overall decision is made by an agency that is appointed at the state and county level, but no, it's state level, it's Niagara and Erie County combined. So you really need to send the original to that authority?
Which agency?
Or to the state.
The NFTA.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may, we did, the town clerk did receive some documentation, and in fact, we tried to reach out to tell you that the process you were going through was not correct. We didn't have the correct information to get hold of you. What I'd like to do is be able to get that information, and we'll explain to you what should be done. We wanted to, I didn't know until just now you were that person.
Okay, yeah, no problem. And then, I guess, Mom said, this is Amherst.
We don't have any say in what the NFTA decides to do in terms of transportation.
There are, respectfully, there are a lot of legal ways to do it. We can't give you that legal advice, but one of the things you can do is make sure that those signatures go to the right place.
Okay.
Okay? That's very important. Unfortunately, where they went is to the town, and it really should go to the NFTA.
I can come in tomorrow and get it.
We, we'll work that out. I just, I want you to understand, we were trying to reach you.
Yeah, we did try to reach you three times with the number that we had, so if we could get, make sure the number or somehow...
Yeah, I'll make sure I get something.
Please, thank you.
And then, just, you know, it is Amherst, and we're all friends.
Well, we're not, yeah, we can't go into that. The project, the project is still going through its federal regulatory process, so it's not even approved at the federal level yet. Again, you have to get that, you have to give it to the NFTA directly.
No problem. Is there anything that you would like to make peace with, with some, some, I mean, you're, I step in here, it's like I step in my old CO's office. I was in the Navy for seven years and had a Navy doctor collapse my left lung, so that was kind of, that was that. There is something where how we go about doing something can affect the rest of something else. When, when they collapsed my left lung, then it was three hours in the ER OR waiting, and then surgery without anesthesia. They just sliced open my side and shoved a tube up my, so, and that's affected, that's affected me over the last number of years since I got out in 2019. Anyway, what I'm trying to ask is, this seems to hit some pain points for some people. Is there anything that you would be willing to communicate back with the rest of us to go, oh, okay, well, this is what I hear you saying, and this is what I'm, I would like, this is what I'd like to investigate or to, to find out more about what it is that you guys, I hear, I hear everybody saying, they've made up their mind, this is the decision they're going to have, they don't respect us. I'm just trying to ask you, is there anything that this has made you consider?
There will be a decision that is made at a later date.
Could I, could I ask for, man?
Well, this isn't a give and take. This is a public expression. This is your opportunity to say whatever you want during your three-minute period, which is a little messed up because I interjected, but this is your opportunity to say things to the board. It's not a given date period.
Is there, is there one where there is more of a give and take?
No.
What, Matt, and then, last question is, what would be the process? Maybe I can follow up when I come get the, come get the document, as far as how we could set up something new, where that could be, we could have a peaceful exchange.
Okay. You know what? I'm going to give you my card today anyway, so we can straighten out the other event. I'm happy to talk to you about anything.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, Supervisor Culpa, Deputy Supervisor Lavin, and Councilwoman Marinucci. My name is Andrew Morganti, and I reside in Gettsville. I'm also a member of the Amherst Concerned Citizens Group. I come before you tonight not to create conflict, but to reflect upon what many residents of Amherst are observing and questioning. At the last town board meeting, Michelle Coffey, a member of the Amherst Concerned Citizens Group, respectfully asked you, Supervisor Culpa, for your attention during her presentation. You responded that you were taking notes, yet you left the meeting without addressing any of these questions that were raised. Residents were left wondering what became of those notes, and were they reviewed, shared, or acted upon? Deputy Supervisor Lavin, during Mary Dormand's presentation, another Amherst Concerned Citizen member, regarding the inconsistencies in the secret process, issues we hoped a town would want to correct, you and Supervisor Culpa appear to be disengaged. You were visibly occupied with a separate conversation and had your laptop open throughout it. Whether intentional or not, this behavior signaled disregard for a resident's serious concern. Now, this moment was recorded, and it has since widely been circulated, and as of today, the video has received 7,900 Facebook views and 722 views on YouTube. The message is clear, Amherst is watching. Now, we ask not for perfection, but for presence, for accountability, and for respect. These meetings are not just procedural, they are public forums, and when residents take the time to speak, they deserve to be heard. You may not have been listening to us, but rest assured, we were watching you, and so were 9,500 Facebook and 722 YouTube viewers. I have another question for you, totally disregarded. When do the doors get locked? Because I am receiving messages throughout the meetings to open up the door for residents who are outside.
We were informed by the police about this. As soon as we found out, we took care of it. It's an automatic thing. Most meetings don't go to this late, and somehow it got missed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, and it's a Tuesday night, not a normal night. It was fixed, though, as soon as we found out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, I just want to clarify that while we're having public expression and this board meeting going, this is a time that this board's still working. I do take notes. I do, oftentimes, we'll answer questions at the end of a meeting. Sometimes those questions are more commentary than they are questions, and I choose not to. When I need to look at a map or a graphic, it's helpful to have a laptop open. I don't have one open, so oftentimes, I'll look over... I don't have one open, so oftentimes, I'll look over at Deputy Supervisor Lavin, who doesn't have to be the primary engagement at this meeting, and he'll have Google Earth showing me exactly what the person's talking about. In the case of that individual, I specifically looked over and said, can you open up that map? I wanna see the front of the house, and I wanna see the front of the area that she's discussing. So, you know, we also have to have media access and capacity, and I choose not to have a laptop open. I'm very grateful that I have a deputy supervisor who's willing to sit next to me with his open, so that I can see those items. It's as simple as that. Okay, thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Supervisor Brian Culpa and town board members and meeting attendees. My name is Thomas Franken. I wanna thank you for giving me three more minutes for public expression. And, but what's, what's very important as far as all the meetings and all the planning that has gone on with, you know, Barry Weinstein's Westwood Pharmaceutical Country Club Golf Course, that there's an opportunity here that is connected to the state, New York Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, but it's also connected to the federal. And that's where the Greenway concept came from, because it has to do with the planning, zoning, and permitting of property as far as that's subject to hurricanes or tornadoes as far as a disaster. And if you're in a certain area, they're not going to pay for your damage. And that, that's what came out of, in the village of Williamsville, there were 1,200 properties that are connected to the Elica Creek, the dam. And now, here is an opportunity as far as the Glen Park Joint Board with the Amherst State Park with the county, that the, as far as the, the town of Amherst, the New York Central Park Greenway, that it has to do with the Elica Creek, is a tributary of the Niagara River Greenway, that's fully funded, that the county of Erie and the county of Niagara got the $450 million to allocate, to mitigate the cumulative negative impact of the operation. The power project goes up and down a foot and a half every day. And as far as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers survey of the sinking houses in Amherst, that this is, it goes through 2050. How old are you gonna be in 2050, Brian? I was just kidding. It has to do with the management and the maintenance, and, but also, it will involve, as far as like a five-year development project, as far as the intermunicipal cooperation agreement that will include the, the, the Amherst Central Park, the Boiler House that's been vacant, it's owned by the town, it's been vacant for 20 years because of the asbestos contamination. And the idea here is to connect it into the education system, the school districts, as far as the Greenway. And the, the, the golf course, the plan that you're discussing is a part of the Greenway that.
Mr. Frank, I hate to do this, I apologize, but your time's up.
Okay, you don't have to apologize, and you don't have to do it. I'll just quit talking. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Jane Cox, Harlem Road, I'll Be Brief. Do you expect to vote as a board on the two public hearings that were held tonight at the next town board meeting?
We did vote on the first, first item, right? We voted to adopt the seeker findings, and we voted to proceed with the second item we did not vote on, and I'm gonna leave it up to the board. I don't know when it'll come back for a vote.
It'll be on the agenda for possible vote?
It'll probably remain on the, the agenda, well, it's a public hearing, it's closed. We didn't set a, we didn't set a meeting date, so, or a decision date, so it can come up as a resolution at any point.
So, it would?
It would be introduced as a resolution, yes.
Okay, is it because?
It would probably be, probably fall, sorry, it'd probably fall under Development Actions, which is typically where we house the resolutions associated with public hearing for land use issues.
Okay, so just watch the agenda.
Yes.
Hi. I understand there was a change in the policy about the overhead projector. Can I just bring these up, and you guys can just look at them?
We could pass them on.
Good evening, town board members. My name is Jerry DeCosmo from Meyer Road. I am here tonight out of growing concern for the welfare of a population of Canada geese that have made their home in and around the retention pond immediately behind residents on Meyer Road, constructed as part of the new Costco development here in Amherst. While I understand the retention pond is an important part of stormwater management, its unintended consequence has been to attract a number of Canada geese which now regularly inhabit the area. With the recent construction of a new private road built in close proximity to this pond, there will be an increase in vehicle traffic directly through the geese's habitat. As these birds cross the road daily to graze or move between resting areas, they will increasingly be put at risk. In fact, there has already been one killed on that road, in addition to another runover on the driveway of the Catalyst Gym. This not only endangers the geese, a species protected under federal and state law, but also poses a serious traffic safety concern for drivers who swerve or stop, stop abruptly to avoid them. While the Canada geese is federally protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, I'm not here tonight to argue legalities. I'm here to ask that Amherst, as a community that provides, prides itself on thoughtful planning and environmental stewardship, take responsible proactive steps to mitigate this growing hazard. I respectfully ask, respectfully ask the town board to consider installing wildlife crossing signs near the pond and along the affected road to alert drivers, working with the developers to install low fencing, vegetative barriers, or boulders to discourage geese from accessing the roadway, discouraging or implementing humane deterrent, I'm sorry, encouraging or implementing humane deterrent strategies that is, such as visual deterrence or train dogs to redirect the geese to safer areas, conducting a brief environmental reassessment or at least a site visit to observe the geese's behavior and assess how to proceed responsibly. This is not an anti-development message. It is a request to simply balance development with wildlife and public safety. If one of our goals in town planning is to create spaces that are both livable and sustainable, then I believe this is an opportunity to act in line with these values. Thank you for your time and considering a compassionate and practical response.
In the interest of full disclosure, the last time I golfed was 59 years ago, so I'm not, whatever you call a real avid golfer, I guess. But I'm gonna disagree a little bit with my friend, Mr. Drangoski. Let's assume that it would cost $30 million to build an 18-hole golf course over at Westwood, and the town were going to pay for it. At least the town would be getting something then that it doesn't have now, a brand-new 18-hole golf course. This town spent $33 million to buy a street lighting system that we already had. We bought it from another entity, and then we found out after the fact that the city of Providence, Rhode Island, bought a bigger system from the same entity for slightly more than half of what we paid for ours. So, if we're gonna buy 30, spend $33 million to buy something we already had, why not spend some money to buy something we don't have that we'll still own and we're all said and done with it? And with respect to the mass transit, I missed the hearing on it, I forgot all about it, the public meeting, whatever it was, it would've been fun to attend. But, I don't know, I'm no expert in transportation and that kind of mass transportation, but it always seemed to me in today's ambiance, it's kinda silly to build static systems like that that can't be easily moved, when you can buy all kinds of electric buses and things like that that are infinitely flexible, because, you know, well, you know, mass transit systems are static, and once they're built, they can't be moved. The economy's dynamic, and businesses move from place to place, and you can't always be sure where the next growth spurt's gonna take place. I think we're better off to opt for, you know, maximum flexibility instead of tying ourselves into another, you know, boondoggle like the one we've got currently. And my recollection on that is, I, I think that whole idea of expanding the, it had been floating around for years, the idea of expanding the subway out past UB and so on and so forth. But it really got going, I think, as part of the UB 2020 Plan that was proposed by President Simpson when he was over at UB. He's long gone, and I think the plan to extend the mass transit system down the boulevard oughta be long gone. People forget the nightmare that the expand, the construction of the first system was. I worked in the Rand Building downtown while they were building the, the original system, and our firm lost clients because they didn't wanna come downtown, because the streets were all torn up, everything was a mess. Many, many stores along Main Street were sold a bill of goods about how people were gonna flock downtown when the system was done, and they'd survive burgers and stores like that, all of whom hung on for dear life, only to find out that nobody wanted to come down once it was in place. And I've had conversations with people at NFTA who will tell you, well, look at Main Street now. Yeah, look at Main Street now downtown, because that's, because they reintroduced auto traffic back onto Main Street. It had nothing to do with the subway. The subway sat there for 30 years, and Main Street died. When they reintroduced auto traffic on Main Street, Main Street began to come back, and that's why they're extending it the rest of the way down Main Street to try and bring back the rest of Main Street. The, the whole thing was conceived in the 50s when Buffalo was a much bigger city. They didn't get around to building it for 30 years later, and by that time, it wasn't needed, it was too late. But why not spend a couple of billion anyhow if you've got it to spend?
If I just may, I, I do believe there's gonna be another public comment, and I think they're considering a rapid bus. I know it's not us, NFTA, but I do think that's part, what you're saying here is part of what they're proposing. I don't know when the next public forum is, it'll be through the NFTA, but it would be helpful if you told them that, too. Because I do think that's part of their current proposal, is the static system and a rapid bus line, if anything comes of it.
Chris Drangoski, Mill Street. I was gonna talk about how the previous supervisor got us into this mess, but since they all left, I'll wait for another time. They, I guess they didn't wanna hear it. You know, 25 years involved with this Westwood and the golf program, and actually 30 years with the golf program, 25 years with the Westwood. I honestly believe, and believe me, if I didn't believe it, I'd let you know, and you know that about me. I think this is the best plan that was presented tonight for the town. When you look at the financial aspects, it just makes sense. The town, I mean, my good friend, Mr. Plunkett, just said, you know, we hit my $30 million. Yeah, the town was lustered money, and we had $30 million sitting around, that would be great. But, you know, I'd rather see that money spent on hiring more police officers, incentivizing our volunteer fire companies, so that they can have the number of recruits that they, the number of people staffing these firehouses. What I'm trying to say is, there's a much higher priority, and this is hard for somebody who's been pro-golf for so many years in this town, there's much higher priorities for that money. And this is the best plan that I've seen, and it will remed, it, it will end this debacle, whatever you wanna call it, Westwood. I mean, I think we all want the fence to come down, we want access to the property. It's embarrassing to see the no trespassing, the parking lot there. It, it's time to move on. And to say, you know, there's people that want a permissive referendum, let me remind this board, you were elected 60 to 40. The minority doesn't get to tell the majority what to do, all right? And I told people out there, if you wanna do a permissive referendum, go get the signatures. I was involved the last one. And let me tell you, I've seen polls regarding what was presented tonight, and good luck to them, because the people in this town want this park, and they love the idea, and it's long overdue. So, you know, it's, it's the best option, no one's, I don't see anybody coming up here with other options, and it's the best option, and unfortunately, it's so far gone, and it doesn't make any financial sense to bring that back as an 18-hole golf course by the town. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, if I can just remind, the public expression is not supposed to be anything to do with anything that was a public hearing, it's supposed to be about everything else. I let the last two speakers go on it, but we should be sticking to what the town's, which I think Mr. Plunkett was involved in way back, setting up the public expression. Kidding you. I'll tell you after.
Don Smith, North Lawn. Thank you for being here and listening to us tonight, that's important. One of the most important things we have as citizens is the ability to talk to our town board. It's important for us to do so. We have a responsibility to let you know what we feel. It's important to us. And regardless of what the rules of order are, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, if you could really parse it that well, which I don't think you can, we got the option to say what we want, okay? If rules are that we can't say things and you tell us we can't say, it doesn't work out. That's not, that's not gonna work for us. You gotta, the dialogue works for us. Now, on, on the Westwood, that thing has been a mess or a problem for a long time. Before you got here, we're hoping it ain't a mess after you guys leave. I mean, the whole idea here is to do something with it, and we're hoping that you can, all right? 7.5 million is, is done deal, we spent it, it's gone. It's, we have to pay it off. Do I think that some people's view of what it is is the right way of a nine-hole golf course? No, I don't think so. There was a guy in here that said it was a really good, as a passive park, and other ways. It's probably pretty close to what your original idea was in the first place. But I think you need to think about all the intricacies of the process here. If the whole idea is about making money, make it an 18 golf, 18-hole golf course. If the whole idea is to make some money, make it into a nine-hole golf course. The only problem I have is when I see plans, but I don't see ways of implementing those plans, or I see them as promises and not as ways of getting things done after the fact, I get worried. I, I don't want, I don't want promises, I want performance. And that's what I'm looking for, from the, from the county, performance. And you need to put them, you know, put in a position that you analyze their performance and let us know what you think about their performance, and whether it's filling our needs. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna move to close first round of public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there is a consent agenda this evening. I'm gonna ask the town clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Council, Councilmember Lavin, 1. Town Clerk, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Central Alarm, 1, 2, 3. Controller, 1. Contract Compliance, 1. Economic Development, 1. Highway, 1, 2, 3. Human Resources, 1, 2. Police, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Senior Services, 1. Sewer and Plant, 16, 1, 2, 3. Youth and Recreations, 1. Under Communications, 1 was referred to Attorney. Engineering and Planning, and 2 was referred to Attorney. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one remaining item on the agenda, and then one suspension item this evening. The next item is Resolution 762, a sidewalk waiver request, SWW 2025-02, 1101 Niagara Falls Boulevard.
Supervisor, I'd like to motion to deny the sidewalk waiver request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sidewalk waiver request is denied. Next item on the agenda, I'm gonna motion to, to exit the agenda for purposes for purposes of dealing with one suspension item that was a topic of work session discussion. So I'll motion that now, all in favor?
Aye.
With that.
Thank you Supervisor. This was discussed at our public, in our work session at 4:00 PM this afternoon. So, whereas the senior population within Amherst in the western New York continues to increase, creating demand for affordable housing for the town's elderly population, the town of Amherst recognizes the growing need for safe, accessible, and affordable housing options for its senior population. And on July 9th, 2025, the Southern Tier Environments for Living, a New York not-for-profit corporation organized under Section 501(c)(3) with the address of 715 Central Avenue, Dunkirk, New York, entered into a purchase-sale agreement with the owner of an approximately 2.2-acre portion of vacant land located at the northeast portion of 3,900 Maple Road in the town of Amherst for the purpose of developing the affordable senior housing and community. Whereas the Legacy Village Affordable Senior Housing Project to be owned and operated by STEEL with RAS Development Company serving as developer consultant, is proposed to consist of four-story building of approximately 80,358 square feet, containing 81 units of affordable senior housing specifically designed for individuals aged 55 and older who can live independently. The project site is zone Center 5 District, CTR 5, according to the town of Amherst zoning map, which permits high-density multifamily residential or office development and the proposed use of, as an affordable senior housing aligned with the housing goals and objectives in the adopted, in the adopted town of Amherst Bicentennial Comprehensive Plan. The adopted comprehensive plan establishes the policy that ensuring and affordable housing is available to all residents is a priority of the town of Amherst and further states that due to the large number of residents who pay housing, high housing costs relative to their income levels, the town supports all initiatives that increase affordable housing. The comprehensive plan also emphasizes the importance of housing diversity, noting that the town must offer a range of housing options in urban, suburban, and rural areas. It states that preserving the, providing a variety of housing opportunities will maintain the quality and stability of existing neighborhoods while increasing affordable, housing affordability and ISO move.
So, I could second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So with that, I'm going to motion to return to regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to motion to open the second round of public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Going to motion to close the second round of public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?